Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The first items on our agenda require special session, so I'll entertain a motion to go into special session.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of going into special session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The first item is the approval of a contract for high grass and trash abatement earned contractors, Inc.
I hereby move for mayor and council approval to award the annual high grass and trash abatement contract to be effective April 1, 2015, to Earn Contractors, Inc. of Gay Pittsburgh, Maryland.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Contract is approved. Oh, and I'm sorry. Mr. Munson, Councilmember Munson, wanted me to express his regret that he could not be at today's meeting. A very good friend of his, I think he described him as his best friend, passed away and his funeral is today, so he could not make it with us here today. But we certainly give him our condolences for the loss of his friend. The next item on our agenda is the introduction of an ordinance authorizing the purchase, rehab, and sale of a property located at 261 South Prospect Street for the city's homeownership program.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move to introduce an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property located at 261 South Prospect Street for the city's homeownership program. The acquisition of 261 South Prospect Street is consistent with the community's city center plan, Catalyst Project Number Eight, the city's housing and neighborhoods vision, and the 2015 goals and priorities established by this mayor and council. The proposed project will be funded with community development block grant funds.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Ms. Nye. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the introduction of the ordinance is approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of a development and rental guarantee agreement for student housing. This is a project consistent with Catalyst Project Number Three.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council introduce an ordinance to enter into the attached development and rental guarantee agreement with Blackwell Two LLC for a student housing project at 100 North Prospect Street. This is the first model student housing project under Catalyst Project Number Three, US MH Expansion Support.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I've got just a few updates, I think, from last week's discussion.
Okay.
If you could just cover those briefly.
Please.
So just to review, that this is a formalization of the concept into a development agreement and a rental guarantee agreement. I want to acknowledge our partner, Mark Halsey, the executive director of the university system of Hagerstown in Maryland. And we're working on a tight timeframe, and to keep this project on target, we're looking to introduce the ordinance this evening and to pass the ordinance next week. We are, as we talked about last week, still negotiating, and our memo states that this is the model for the agreement, that it may vary slightly next week, but we'll follow very closely to the attached document. We're working on some key points of discussion with the developer on the rent level, that the original RFSI, Request for Statement of Interest, identified a rent of 850. There's a request for a rent of 950, and that's a negotiation point that we're working on. We're also addressing concerns of the hotel cost obligation of the developer, should there be a delay for the August 15 occupancy, in which that delay is of no fault from -- of the developer itself. And so we're looking at some clarifying languages and some ways to address those concerns. And we're also looking at just some basic logistical and clarifying language. I think we're very, very close in that the document that we'll bring forward to you next week will very closely follow what you have in front of you. The memo outlines the terms and conditions of the agreement. To summarize those very briefly is the delivery of the product and the development aspect of this, also the rental guarantee, timing aspects, and also management and operational items. And Kathy, myself, and Mark are here to answer any questions.
Is the -- is this project subject to the rental licensing program? Because I thought that occurred to me when I was reading through. So that's part of that?
I believe that, yes, it would be registered under the rental licensing program.
Okay. And let's see. This is very good, by the way. I was just reading through. Let me see if I had any other questions. Are there any other questions or comments?
Well, besides requiring additional financial support, how does the 950 affect the estimated marketability or the count -- you know, what -- is there a marketability calculation in terms of comparative rents? Do we have any idea?
I think we feel that 950 could be marketable and is reasonable in the market, and the 950 is also a number that the developers looking for in their pro forma model, the financial model for the project. So it's a combinat -- combination of both what works for the developers' bottom line as well as what the market can draw, and those are conversations that we're having.
And what we pay to support.
Correct.
That's a calculation, too.
The difference on the rent guarantee of going from 850 to 950 changes the city's obligation from 20,400 on an annual basis, assuming that there was zero occupancy, that would be the maximum obligation of the city, to 22,800. So that's a difference of $2,400 with the change in the rent, should the rent go from 850 to 950.
The upside of higher rents is that it demonstrates that those kinds of rents can be commanded in the location that we're talking about as well.
Right. We feel, from what Mark mentioned at last week's meeting, as well as conversations we've had since, is that there's certainly a demand for the units. We're trying to fill eight students into four units, and we think that there will be high demand and a pipeline of students looking for this, and that also supports the potential of the higher rent. Mark, did you want to add anything?
Just that the conversations that we've had with people outside of the area that are living in apartments now, they're paying minimally that amount for housing that they describe as significantly under standard. So I think they would be paying the same amount with this higher proposal, is what they're paying now anyway, but certainly for something significantly better.
So Jill, you're going to brief us on the outcome of these points that we're still negotiating before the final action next week?
We can do that, yes.
I think I'd like to know what --
If I could just clarify, too, as we've talked about, we've got the PEP program incentives offered for this, the Invest Hagerstown incentives, but that the students wouldn't -- would not be eligible for the city center residency initiatives. I just want to confirm that.
Correct.
But that's the way it's structured right now.
Also, the developer has identified additional improvements to the commercial space and the residential space. The project is now closer to 720,000, which would propose a first third grant of 240,000. Again, the concept had us to a maximum of the 250 program maximum. They were previously at just under 210 in an earlier draft, and now the potential of 240, especially with some more improvements to the commercial space.
I think it's great. Good work. All right, there has been a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the introduction of this ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and again, this will be on our agenda for approval next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is the approval of a resolution for the City of Hagerstown's public facilities bonds.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of a resolution authorizing the City of Hagerstown to issue and sell by solicitation of competitive bids at public sale two separate series of general obligation bonds. One such series will be issued on a tax exempt basis in the aggregate principal amount of $8,020,000 in order to finance 19 specific projects identified in the resolution. The other such series will be issued on a taxable basis in the aggregate principal amount of $1,850,000 in order to finance three specific projects identified in the resolution. As required by enabling city ordinance 0-15-01, which was passed by the council and approved by the mayor on February 10, 2015, the resolution enumerates details regarding the bonds and their sale, and authorizes the Director of Finance, or in her absence or disability, the city administrator, on behalf of the city, to make modifications to bond details and to provide for communication of such adjustments prior to the sale, and to award the separate series of the bonds or reject bids for one or both series on the sale date. The resolution provides that the full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power of the City of Hagerstown shall be irrevocably pledged to the payment of the principal of an interest on the bonds. Appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to take the actions necessary to proceed with the bond sale to close the issuance and delivery of the bonds.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that I -- we need to do an issue, and I support this issue and made the motion, but I want to raise our awareness that many of the projects that we are contemplating for city center and other items, by some of the standards applied by bond council to the taxable versus non-taxable issue, I think down the road we'll be facing many taxable series of bonds, and that will impact negatively our capacity to issue bonds because it will raise the debt service. For instance, the taxable debt here makes a difference of 177,000 over the life of the bonds. So if we were issuing millions for a project, it would be a pretty significant number. So I'm just pointing out that issues about use of the property, ownership of the property, and things like that, you know, will affect our bond capacity in the future on the types of bonds that we're looking at. Just throwing it out there. I'm not saying we should --
I think you wanted to touch on some of that a little more. Is that right, Michelle?
Well, and I just want to say currently, with the two different series, the taxable bond, the projects that are included in that are melt property for 650,000, as well as the wastewater projects that Synagro is managing, in which we have already signed contractual obligation to see those improvements and move forwards with.
Those would be taxable?
So those would be under the taxable, the 1.85 million. What we were able to do is still secure those, the taxable series, for the same duration, which is a 20-year life. The current estimated interest rate is going to be right at 3.89 percent. The tax exempt series, the estimated interest rate is at 3.06 percent difference. So there's a slight difference. Again, it's under the 1 percent, Mr. Councilmember Brubaker already mentioned. Over the life of 20 years, that 1.85 million is an additional 177,000, the majority of which is all on the enterprise one side. After myself and several of my staff and Bruce Zimmerman, city administrator, has spent many, many hours going in great detail over these bond projects with our bond council and have reviewed various documents, actually, the Synagro document, which goes back well over 20 years.
When you might explain, when you're talking about Synagro, you're talking about the contract we have for the pelletizing operation at the wastewater plant with a private entity.
Correct.
So that's why it's in the taxable category?
And because of, yes, because of the nature of the private contractor and their operations and what they're managing and overseeing, they're actually managing and directly overseeing the entire construction process, and then we're reimbursing them. So that has come under question, and our bond council feels that with some safe harbor laws that's currently out there, anytime that as a public governmental agency that we would have operational control and management of some of our areas be under someone in the private sector, it raises questions regarding a taxability standpoint.
I want to make sure it's clear, that was -- I was not critiquing city staff. I was saying, if indeed these kinds of rulings are made on our future bond issues, we'll be facing higher costs without getting into each and every one, whether it's the stadium, the academic hub, anything that's run by a private group contracted for, even if we own it, things like that, could all be subject to taxable instead of non-taxable. And I say could. What I would recommend is, the closer we get to implementing anything that's questionable, that we start early discussing, especially high expense items, discussing it with bond council. Perhaps the way we structure it might make a difference, you know? I don't, you know? So just throwing that out there for the future, and I hope we can do that.
And then if I could, the bond sale is scheduled for April 1st.
Correct.
The day after we complete the budget, so not an easy time for the finance staff.
April 11.
It will be a competitive, public bond sale.
Yes.
We're, as we have in the past, work with our bond council. That's the attorney that helps us draft these documents. Les Guthorn, our financial advisor, is also helping us. Between now and April 1st, Michelle, Raina Rose, and I will be talking, along with Lester Guthorn, our financial advisor, we'll be talking with both Moody's and S&amp;P on the bond rating. So there's a lot that will happen in the next few weeks.
How's that budget coming along?
About 60 percent of this is for water, wastewater, that type of project, to maintain our water and sewer system and do it responsibly, and they're not subject to being paid for by the general taxpayer.
Right. It'll also be funded by the revenues from the utilities.
Funded by the revenues from it, and investments we need to make to keep the system up to date.
Correct.
Very good point. Any other discussion? Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the resolution is approved. Thank you all very much. All right, at this time, we will move into our work session. I think we have our guests here, so we'll move right along. The first item, I will adjourn our special session, move into our work session. The first item is a proclamation for Women's History Month. And, you know, a woman was at the very forefront of starting the Washington County Free Library, and a very able and fine woman continues that tradition in leading the Washington County library. So here to accept the proclamation for National Women's History Month is Mary Bykam from the Washington County Library. Mary, thank you for being here.
Thank you for the honor of being presented with this citation.
Allow me to read this. This is a proclamation recognizing Mary Bykam during Women's History Month. Whereas the great contributions of American women in enriching and shaping our nation are observed in March, and whereas Women's History Month is an annual declared month worldwide that highlights the contributions of women to events in history and contemporary society, and whereas throughout our history, women have worked tirelessly to improve life for not only themselves, but for the equality and opportunity of all people, regardless of race, gender, or economic or social status, and whereas the history of Maryland is filled with stories of strong and courageous female leaders, from Harriet Tubman to Clara Barton, and whereas women are also making history today, women like Mary Bykam, who is a professional librarian and has served as director of the Washington County Free Library for 20 years. Is that true?
That's true. How does a mere child work under age when I came here?
She has also served as legislative chair for the Maryland Library Association, and in 2007, Mrs. Bykam chose -- was chosen as the National Librarian of the Year by Library Journal, the industry's top trade publication. And whereas we recognize those women of the past, present, and future, who have dedicated their lives to the active engagement within their local communities. Now, therefore, with the support of the city council, I, David Geisberts, mayor of the City of Hagerstown, do hereby recognize March 2015 as Women's History Month in Hagerstown, Maryland, and urge all citizens to celebrate the heritage, impact, and influence of women all across the nation. Mary, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And would you like to say a few words?
Oh, well, all right. Obviously, I'm very honored to be chosen to accept this proclamation on behalf of all of the working women in Washington County and Hagerstown, who make such a great contribution to the quality of life. Our predecessor, Mary Titcomb, was truly one of the vanguards in quality public service, library service, not only to Washington County, but she set a standard for the entire nation. And I'm very honored to walk in her footsteps, and thank you so much for this.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Picture. Do you want to --
Thank you.
This is also Ethics Awareness Month, and we have the Chair of our Ethics Committee Commission, Reverend Stanlet Steele, here, and we also have former mayor, city councilman, and city administrator, and city engineer, Bill Brickner, who also serves on our Ethics Commission here. If you guys don't mind coming up?
Kathleen.
And Cath -- oh, and Kathleen is also on the Ethics Commission.
Assistant Director of the Library.
Yes, the Assistant Director of the Library, also on our Ethics Commission. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Sir? So allow me to read this proclamation. This is for Ethics Awareness Month, March 2015. Whereas a commitment to ethical standards and operations helps to promote strong public confidence in Hagerstown city government, and whereas public officials and employees may earn the trust of their communities by adhering to high standards of ethical and moral conduct, and whereas members of our community and leaders in our organization have contributed to the development of this Hagerstown Code of Ethics, which applies to all City of Hagerstown elected and appointed officials and to all city employees, and whereas the International City-City Management Association, the National League of Cities, and the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and numerous other national and state municipal management associations encourage their members to strengthen and abide by certain ethical standards, now therefore be it resolved that with the support of the city council, I, David Geisberts, the mayor of the City of Hagerstown, Maryland, do hereby proclaim and recognize March 2015 to be Ethics Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens, government agencies, and all other public and private institutions in Hagerstown to recognize the importance of ethical conduct in our community, and to commit to increasing awareness and understanding of the ethical principles that should guide our professional and personal interactions with one another. So thank you for accepting this proclamation, and I know we have an item on our agenda that deals with ethics tonight, so thanks again for your service to the community. And Reverend, would you like to say a few words?
I got a few to say later, so I'll keep it brief. It's an honor to serve on this commission, and obviously, ethics are very important. I'm glad to say we have not been overworked. So luckily, the issues have been manageable. A few little changes to the ordinance are necessary that we'll talk to you tonight, but it's a great group of people to work with. The work is taken very seriously, and obviously, it's a very important thing to keep before us as officials elected and appointed, as well as citizens of the city. So thank you.
We will do our best to keep you unbusy.
All right, thank you. One, two, three. Do you want to add?
Thank you very much. Speaking of ethics, the next item on our agenda is our proposed amendments to Chapter 33, the Code of Ethics, and the annual report of the city's Ethics Commission. So Reverend Steele, would you like to come back to the table?
Thank you for having us this evening and this afternoon. This should be fairly brief and not too difficult. The report is not very long. I think you got, hopefully, you got a bit of one. We, as I said earlier, have not been overly busy, but busy somewhat. We've had three advisory opinions that we've considered during the year and have worked to a resolution. There has been training of staff developed and offered. We have worked on the form for both elected and non-elected officials, boards, and commission members. I have mine tonight. I'm very late. I should admit that as chair. We don't get 100 percent response from board and commission members. I would imagine Donna, 85 percent maybe of the responses. We don't have a lot of leverage. We do remind them, and we take it seriously, but at the end, there's not a lot we can do except let you know if you're interested, those who have not been compliant with the reporting, if you will. I really don't have anything else to add, except for the amendments that we are proposing tonight, to discuss those with you.
And we could just review those. I believe there are three, is that right? Four?
There are, yes.
The first has to do with the amount of time a former elected or, it's just elected officials, correct?
Right.
Who are part of any kind of discussion prior to not being in office, prevents them from coming back and being involved in that same issue, not representing the city, but representing another party on the same issue for one year.
Right.
The current language basically says till the next regular session, and of course, we have a regular session every 30 days or every month or so, so that certainly does not fit the intent, or nor does it meet the state standard either, so I think --
Well, we take, took the state language where that was pattern after the state legislature and having one session a year, not every month.
Right.
And when we had a concern raised, that's when we noticed it. So I think the intent was always to have that one-year break from when one is elected to when one can engage with you folks or other elected officials about a matter for the city.
Thank you for that clarification. The next has to do with prohibited acts, and this has to do with gifts. Would you like to explain a little more about that one?
Yeah, the next three are somewhat similar, I believe, Jason, correct me. We're just trying to, it should state that individuals and entities are called upon, if you're getting gifts or such from any of those folks, that should be reported. Right now, the ordinance really only states individuals, so, or persons, so we expanded it to entities as well. A lobbying firm would be an entity, for instance, or business would be an entity, not a person. So this is more, again, for clarification. I think the intent was always for it to be this way, just the language wasn't quite clear. And that's come up, too, and just want to make it a little clearer for folks.
Makes sense.
I might say, too, Mayor, that in the new form, these things are clarified, I believe. So, you know, we kind of jumped ahead of you half a step, but hopefully, you understand we want the forms to be more succinct and more clear.
And have you followed the conversations happening on the state level about some changes in the ethics requirements? One of the things that comes up at certain MML meetings, certainly when the mayors get together and meet, it seems we always come back to the difficulty of getting volunteers for boards and commissions because of the disclosure forms. Have you gotten any feedback on that, or what's your, what are your thoughts on?
We've only had one commission member or board member come to us for clarification, and we were able to work with that individual and clarify it so they could stay on the committee. I forget now if it was a board or a commission.
Because currently, elected officials --
We've not had anybody else raise issues.
Elected officials and appointed officials basically provide the same information? No?
Not quite.
The elected officials are required to file a more extensive report.
Okay.
Board and commission members may indicate that they don't feel that there is a conflict, and therefore, they don't fill out the complete form. They just mark on a checklist that says that they don't feel that there is a conflict.
I think what we're attempting to do in the form is, if you receive a gift that could affect your position, that should be known. If you do business with the city, that should be made known. If you have a relationship with someone who is on a board or an owner of an entity that does business with the city -- does business with the city, if you are related to an employee of the city, it's just sort of put it out there.
Sure.
So if there's a conflict, it's known, it's divulged. We're not trying to make the hurdle so high that we keep good people from being able to serve. We understand the dilemma of getting people to do the things you need them to do on these boards and commissions, but we do believe they need to be open about some of those relations. In this one instance, the gentleman had business in the city, and he was on, I forget if it was zoning or planning at this point. But anyway, we met with him and we worked that out. It was a planning commission, and we were able to meet with him, discuss it, and come to a conclusion where he was able to maintain his relationship on the board. Part of that was, the previous form wasn't very clear, and the new form, I think, does a better job of that.
All right. Any questions or comments, council members? Yes, thanks for your service.
The only thing, I think, if you could, not tonight particularly, but at some point, if you will, if you have any desire to give us direction about folks who have been consistent in not sending the form in, we do have a number of people who just don't respond.
I can work with the clerk on that.
Okay. Because like I said, we remind them, we tell them, but we don't have any really authority to force the issue. That's really up to you.
Okay.
And a lot of times, I think it's just an oversight, to be honest about it.
All right, well, thank you very much. We will put these proposed amendments on, I guess, the next regular session. Are we ready for that? We would introduce those at a regular session this month. All right, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and thank you to all the board members and their work. Like I said before, everyone takes it very seriously, and hopefully, we do a good job. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this is a good sign. We are ahead of schedule, but thankfully, we have Karen Giffen here to talk about street closure requests.
Yes, before I sit down? Good evening, Mayor and Council, and happy St. Patrick's Day. We have had a number of requests for events since I've been here in January. Two of these events do require some road closure. One is for the Hagerstown Rescue Mission on Saturday, April 25th. The route is attached. And the other one is for the Robert W. Johnson Community Center, Footsteps to the Future. We also have that route attached. In these instances, we would ask for insurance. If there is a cost and we can't do the road closures with just auxiliary police, the entity would take that on. We do try to keep that minimal for the organizations. And we have looked over the routes, and we're working with them to make them a safe event. So with that, I was asking for the two road closures that are listed, and if you have any questions.
When you, I'm just looking, number two, the community center staff will coordinate with the city market?
Yeah, we will coordinate, because city markets open that day.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
I understand, okay. And so they're looking at doing it in the neighborhood?
Right, correct, so we would want to communicate to everyone, Mayor.
Gotcha.
Karen, why do these require, some of these require a state highway permit?
Um, I.
Is that some of the upcoming ones?
Yeah, the upcoming, not these two, correct.
Okay, I'd be curious, on any road other than Washington and Franklin?
Well, Potomac, if you look at the map on the back, Potomac is a state highway, so that might be.
You don't get a dime, dime making from the state.
But it is a state highway.
It's not a state highway. Well, they can have it both ways.
Isn't Route 60?
I think when we.
65?
Yeah, it's, when we close out Potomac, we obviously don't need a state highway permit, but both Franklin and Washington and certain ones.
So Route 40, okay.
Yeah.
But if they.
I do, but I do.
No, I have a subject.
It's a sore subject of mine.
You're only closing one of those first one.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, she's talking about upcoming potential ones.
Yeah, if anything else, I make sure that everyone has their permits.
State highway permit, and I want to make sure we're not jumping through hoops that we shouldn't have to jump through.
No, we try not to do that, but definitely, we have a state highway, if it's needed, we make sure that they get that. We also make sure that they have the insurance, and we also make sure that they notify the neighborhood.
When you answer the question, you're not closing these streets?
We are actually closing some of the streets.
Yeah, because.
Full road closures for Randolph.
Some of these are going to have to close to some type of limited access.
Correct. And we work with the police on that, Public Works Engineering, and we do have full road closures for, like Randolph and Locust on the rescue mission.
How many people are they initially?
They're never sure, Councilmember Metzner, but he was thinking 100 to 200.
These are both initial, like, first-time events?
Correct. And I have to say, we've had some other requests that don't, we may not have to close roads. We have been, I think we have like six requests for races between now and June. It's really taken off. And if you remember, it's already happened, the Discovery Station we brought to you in January for May 2nd. So, and I have another one coming up in July that we're just looking to see the route. So it's really been interesting, the number of questions we had.
So is everyone okay with these? Do you have any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
I know you're here also for the Community Access Channel.
Okay.
So move on to that topic.
Sure. If you, our recently adopted franchise agreement with Antietam Cable Television does provide the, for PEG channels, which is public access, education, and government, we do have our government and our education channel. However, under our franchise agreement, in order to ask for a public access channel, there are a number of guidelines that groups would have to meet in order for us to even request the channel. We have had some requests, so what we wanted to do, if possible, because we feel that this would be, this would provide a fair way for us to review the, review plans and operations and needs, is to actually create an RFP. It would not have a deadline. It would just continuously go about that beyond until we find an entity that would meet our guidelines. We would work, if possible, if you agree, with our consultants that we work with, with the franchise, to develop this. And please remember, a public access channel has to be separate from the city's government channel, and PEG fees can pay for some capital cost, but not staffing and operations. So anyone that comes in would have to have a good business plan for this channel. So really, we're looking at ways to review these requests and to see that the business plans meet the guidelines in the franchise agreement. So we're actually just anticipating a fair and just way to review anyone that wants to operate their plan.
So the $4,800 would be to work with CBG on the RFP?
Mm-hmm.
So that there is assurance that there is a screening process?
Correct.
To respond to these proposals?
That's correct, Mayor. Mm-hmm.
Any questions for staff on this?
You say a business plan, which I presume is how they're going to meet expenses.
Mm-hmm.
Advertising, I presume there's no advertising. Is there advertising allowed on a PEG?
On the PEG channel, you might be able to sponsor some certain things, but you cannot sell advertising, that's correct.
Sponsor, though.
Yeah, you might be able to have some sponsorship.
Like on PBS, when they say, "Brought to you by X and Such," and "Viewers like you."
Right, and they repeat the same stuff over and over.
Right, all the different foundations.
Well, it's also how they would staff, facilitate their equipment. They would have to have some constant programming in the agreement itself, which there's a number of things that they have to meet. What we're trying to do is to anticipate, okay, somebody wants to come in, we want to have a good way to review their plan and to make sure that it is something that will be a continuous operational effort to request that channel.
Takes a lot of work to put all that stuff on the air.
It does take a lot of work.
Right.
This is probably a premature question, but what about content? How does, how do you keep, how do you control?
Right.
And I hate to use the word "control," but how to keep it from being outrageous?
Well, I would say on public access, you know, you do have some limited, the control would be under FCC guidelines, and I would also think that we would look over whatever entity runs it, if they have some bylaws or some guidelines themselves. So that's a very good question.
I would assume these would be things that would be addressed in the RFP.
In the RFP, yes, mm-hmm.
Well, $4,800 seems like money well spent, then, to get that in order.
Yeah, I think it shows us a fair and just way to look over the proposal, and it also ensures us that the operational needs would be met, and we would be agreeing to something that would be continuous.
But once more, you can't use the PEG fees for the PEG program.
You can't, I'm sorry, you can't.
You can't use it for the capital and for the study.
Correct, but.
But for the ongoing operating.
Correct, you cannot use it for operational staffing. The city doesn't use it for operational staffing, just for capital need. That's correct.
I don't know.
Okay.
I think this is an outdated piece of writing in the agreement. I mean, public access is virtually at your fingertips in this age.
I know, my cousin has it. She has her own little YouTube.
I think it's $4,800 we're going to spend for a consultant to give us exactly what we want, and then at the end of the day, you know, at the end of this negotiated process with Antietam, it's another reason to say, here's why your rates are increasing, you know, across your customer base, for something that highly likely is never going to happen, because anybody that can put together something like that to put on, to put on a television has already done it on a computer.
I would say, I understand Councilmember Alshire, but we have had people wanting to come in to put plans together.
Oh, I have seen that.
It is out of the PEG fees that we are already collecting, but we just wanted to have the best process we can possibly.
This is not in any way, shape, or form an increase in what cable.
No, it's.
This comes out of existing arrangements.
That's correct.
Anybody that's aggrieved of this obvious fair process, is then going to jump on a computer and do exactly that in some fashion to say why they weren't provided the opportunity to fairly do so. For me, I'd just get rid of that whole piece of this contract altogether.
We just approved the contract for 12 years, so.
I.
Maybe you'll have another chance to vote on that.
Totally. [laughing].
Anyone else?
I don't believe it would be that.
Comments or questions? Is everyone else okay with the $4,800? Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
If it doesn't bother anybody, I'd like to move number seven up to be the next, the Tribute to Veterans Banner Project. If we could have Erin come up and talk about that next, that'd be good.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
If you recall, at the end of November, during your regular session, Mr. Tim Thompson attended and presented the idea of a Veterans Banner Project. He is joining us today in the audience. I've been working with him, he's also been working with other municipalities about getting these banners hung in other communities, including Clear Spring, Hancock, Williamsport. I spoke with Sharpsburg and Boonsboro. I reached out to some of those other communities as well, too. The basics of the project is that banners would be printed. Interested veterans sponsoring families or friends could submit applications for a banner. The banners would feature the veteran's picture, name, the community, where they're from, other service ranks, the branch of military they were in. The sponsor or the veteran would make the payment directly to the company printing the banners, and that's how the payment would be exchanged. The banners would then be printed and hung. Ideally, Mr. Thompson would like them to be displayed from Memorial Day until Veterans Day, which is about a five-month period. Mr. Thompson has established a website, which is currently unpublished. He also has a Facebook page, and he's getting some billboards made that he's going to feature where people can apply for these. I will say in my conversations with Mr. Thompson, he's a very passionate person, he has a very genuine interest in doing this for the veterans. He's not a veteran himself. He dedicates a lot of his time and energy into seeing that service members receive the gratitude for their service to the country. Basically, our role in this would be that our, the banners would be provided to the city, the city would hang the banners, and when they were, we would remove the banners, and they would be returned to Mr. Thompson, and Mr. Thompson would return them to the families as a keepsake. Mr. Thompson also mentioned whether some of the applications, the photos, checks could be dropped off with the city, and he would take those to have the banners printed up. I did have the opportunity to reach out to other municipalities. I heard back from both Clear Spring and Williamsport. With their communities, there's not going to be any additional cost to the taxpayers, because they're just going to remove their current banners and replace these. I was told in Williamsport that they currently don't have any brackets, but they were working on arrangements with Mr. Thompson to have those provided. When he originally spoke with you at the end of November, he had mentioned ideally placing these banners around the downtown. Since we have received our Main Street designation, staff have been working on branding our downtown as a Main Street community, including posting the banners that are currently up, that were purchased within the last several months. There are some alternative areas where we could place them, such as the light poles in the north end and the south end on Potomac Street, outside of the downtown area. There is consideration there where we would have to acquire brackets to have them hung. Again, if they would also go in parks, we would need to acquire brackets for those as well. I reached out to other staff for estimates on those, and they're about $80 apiece for each one, and, you know, each light pole requires two brackets for top and bottom. I spoke, last time I spoke with Mr. Thompson, he had already had 20 preliminary applications for people who would like to have a banner in Hagerstown for a veteran. So I wanted some direction from Council on your suggestions, your ideas for where you'd like to see the banners and how you'd like to participate in the project, if so.
And then one addition, just on behalf of Eric, Public Works staff would be installing and removing the banners.
Correct, and just say, for example, again, Mr. Thompson said he had about 20 applications for Hagerstown, and he hasn't really advertised the project widely. Say if that, we, Mr. Thompson is open to putting a cap on the number of banners that we would display, and they would be made on a first-come, first-served basis, he says, but a ballpark figure if there were 40 banners. Eric Deke had said that would take about two Public Works staff, two days to hang them with the use of a bucket truck.
Mr. Brubaker.
Memorial Boulevard. My suggestion, if we do, if we decide to do this, I mean, people could see them all at once, they'd be in a row, and they'd be on what's already Memorial Boulevard, you know, there's already, you know, commemorative memorial there as well. I think it would tie in well, and I think they would all fit together, and there's a pretty good span to applaud them, so if we decide that we're going to do this, that would seem to me a very logical place to do this.
It's a great suggestion.
It's a good suggestion. It's the right name of the street, the marker is there already, and we'd have the Memorial Park right there.
Okay. So are we thinking, how many banners would be hung at a time? I guess we'd have to look and see.
We'd have to count the light poles along there, and I do know that those are, most of those are wooden poles and not metal. I don't know if that changes anything or not.
Do we have to buy brackets, or do we have?
We have, according to Eric Deke, we have a few spare sets of brackets, but we don't have enough that we could.
Yeah, I'd like to see this be a public-private partnership, too. I mean, I could, you know, if we do the in-kind thing of putting them up, if there could be an organization that would fund the brackets, that, and that sort of thing, and the banners and so.
If I can, I think maybe it's possible, the planning is getting ahead of things, that the first thing we should do is say what I think we all feel that we really like the concept. Then what we need to know is, in reality, how many banners are going to we have? How much is it going to cost if we wanted to do Memorial Boulevard? Do we, is it, this is something we should do the right way. So it may be the kind of thing where in year one, say there's a huge 100 people, maybe we're only going to do 40, maybe we're only going to do 20, and every month, rotate, rotate them out and build this up. I can see that we may make a decision that we want something other than just poles that we already have. I can see various different ways to do this. I think the big issue is saying, yeah, we agree with it, and we want to see it done well, and that may mean, again, rotating these banners for the first year. And that may mean, again, rotating these banners for the first year so that there aren't a hundred out at one time, but did everybody's banners get up?
I would think that we don't have a hundred poles.
No, no, I say you may have to find other methods. There's also, and you would wanna discuss this with the, the folks who've done this, but it would certainly seem to be logical. Uh, we have the huge triangle there at the Korean War Memorial that, that would be a very appropriate place for Korean War veterans' banners to be. Uh, I think that'd be very appropriate. Got a lot of public property right there. Um, so, uh, I think what we don't wanna get locked into is the theory that these banners have to be hung the same way all the banners that we generally think of are hung. There's maybe another way around it to do it.
And I guess I'm not prepared to approve a timeframe yet, I guess-
Or money yet, until we know what we have.
And, and I'd like to have ours be an in-kind contribution rather than a, otherwise, I think public-private is the way to go on this.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Wolf, do you have enough clarity on the council's?
And I'm sorry, I threw that out. The mayor asked for one location, so that's-
I think that's a very appropriate location.
Yeah, and I think, um, it's, it's best for our role to be to hang the banners and to remove them, change them out. Um, and if, if Mr. Thompson wants to take care of collecting all the work for the applications, um, you know-
May also be able to walk the Rusel Cemetery.
Right.
But that would be an additional concern. Uh, Mr. Thompson's, I'm sure is very competent and very willing, but none of us last forever. And we're always, you know, you know, what, how, how does this work down the road? So that's another thing to think about.
It's a great effort, though, so we appreciate that, that effort and, uh, the dedication Mr. Thompson's put to that. It'd be very nice when it comes to fruition. All right, thank you very much. All right, let's do, uh, the previous item, number six, memorandum of understanding with the Washington County Free Library and the School Resource Officer Information. Welcome, Chief.
Good. Back to discuss the, uh, uh, concept of putting a library officer, a library resource officer in the downtown library. And the model that we're looking at, as we discussed before, is similar to the school resource officer model where the, uh, library would fund, uh, a portion of the officer's salary. Uh, in, in, and this would, uh, increase our staff from a hundred and seven officers authorized to a hundred and eight. Uh, we are prepared to fill the position, uh, as early as April. And, uh, so in the last, when I came here last week, we talked to Councilman Munson, asked me for some numbers to support it. And then also I wanted to try to firm up, uh, the actual cost to you. So I have a handout that includes, uh, the calls for service that we've had uh, since the library reopened in October of 2013. So in just about a year and a half, what we're looking at, uh, on the back page of the, of the document includes the, the funding. So let me just go over quickly the calls for service. On the front, you can see some, a large number there, uh, almost towards the bottom where it says patrol special checks made. Uh, a large part of what we do with our downtown officers is, is, uh, there, there was a need from the beginning from opening the library to do some special checks there. So our downtown staff are taking time out of their, uh, schedule. They go into the library at least twice a day and they log those, uh, checks. That's where that six hundred is coming from. We're logging those special checks at the library, walking through the library, walking around the grounds of the library and then returning to, back to the downtown A and E District is, is what the downtown officer's doing. So while there's a total of about a thousand police, uh, events there, uh, two-thirds of those are caused by us where they're trying to prevent, uh, issues. Uh, but around three hundred of them are actual calls for service. So just about every single day they're open. They do have a need to call the police to come down to the library for one event or another, whether it's a suspicious person, whether it's a theft, whether it's some sort of disturbance, a juvenile issue. Uh, that, none of them are, are a real big standout other than, uh, perhaps, uh, a third of the way down the front of that page where it says disturbance, uh, where we had thirty-two disturbances. So, um, at least every other week, she, she's averaging a pretty good disturbance at, at there that, that causes the police to be called. And in talking with, um, with Ms. Bycon who was here, it, you know, she says, "We don't like to call the police unless we really, really have to." Uh, but these numbers would be much higher. Uh, the, the need for police is more than just the, the, what's shown here. Uh, like most business owners, they, they don't wanna overtax the police. So they call only when necessary. They try to handle it themselves and, and oftentimes, uh... So our goal here is to get a, a library officer assigned, a police officer assigned to the library to prevent these, uh, three hundred calls for service that we've had, uh, as many of them as we can. Uh, of course, the special checks would all go away and so these, these numbers would change quite dramatically on the other end of this. And, and in a perfect world, that would be, that would cost us nothing. But, uh, in our world, the, uh, the contribution in this is forty thousand dollars is what the library's prepared to support the position. On the back, I, I have a, uh, entry level position cost estimates. On the far right-hand bottom corner, uh, if you deduct out the forty thousand dollar contribution from the library, we're left with just over fourteen thousand dollars. That's on the low end. Now, depending on what insurance we all take, uh, as employees, it can go as high as twenty-eight thousand dollars, almost twenty-nine thousand dollars. So it just depends, uh, what employee that co- that is. It's just, it's not a fixed cost. So I'll try to give you accurate, actual costs of what it, high end, low end of what that position will cost the city, uh, going forward. So I do think it's worthwhile. It does, it does come in as, as an expense. So and I, and I think it's gonna, you know, create a much better environment inside the library for, for customers and, and the benefit is, is we just touched on briefly. When, when I talked to Ms. Bycon, I said that the officer will not be in the library the whole time. This is gonna be a downtown police officer. They're gonna service the downtown, the, the greater area around the library and also the new trail that we're putting in. I said that this officer's gonna leave the library a couple of times a day, go stretch their legs and walk that trail from downtown to city park and back because I want that patrolled heavily. So she's perfectly fine with that. They'll, they'll be in radio contact, uh, we'll work that out. So if they need him, they can just zip right back. So I, I think it would give us a, some more presence downtown on that trail, dedicated person for our trail, uh, and, and the library. To give you an idea, when, uh, years and years ago when we started our school resource officer program, these are very similar numbers in calls for service at our schools. We were having police officers come off the road, go into the school, handle a calls for service every single day at our schools. Now the school resource officers do that and it frees up the patrol officers to continue to patrol. So it's a very similar model here where we have two officers walking downtown. One of them is, is in the library every day handling a call. And it would free that person back up to be available, uh, a little bit more downtown.
I think you also had a, a very important point in your memo. In addition to creating a safe environment, improving relationships between law enforcement officers and the users of the library. I mean, I think that's an important interaction, just like, uh, the school kids have when they have their resource officer in the schools, they are able to interact. The police are humanized in a sense to the patrons, uh, to the students and to the patrons of the library, so...
Absolutely, uh, Mary tells me-
It does provide that benefit as well.
She gets over a thousand visitors a day to the library. So you're right, there's a thousand police contacts every day, positive contacts every day with our community. So, good point.
If, if we could just, did your convenience, uh, the MOU refers to attachment one, but it wasn't included. And I, I don't need that to make a decision, but-
Okay, I'll check it.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Mr.?
Yeah, one, uh-
Attachment one.
Paragraph eight on page three under guidelines. Party's agreed to certain guidelines. These guidelines are part of this MOU and are attached here, too, and labeled as attachment one.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council members?
I had concerns. I've talked to the chief and our city administrator. I don't have those concerns at this stage.
Anyone else?
Mark, the, um, police officer that's going to be at the library, is he one that's already police officer here that we're gonna, he's going from another shift over onto that job?
Yes, it's a female officer.
That's what I thought you said.
Yeah, female officer, uh, has already been selected for it, yes. So they're already out of the academy. They'll start right away and then, then we'll hire a new officer to backfill them. It'll take some time for that to happen.
And how many officers are we down now? As far as per ship patrol officers?
We're currently down four and we have two in the academy.
Okay. Because I'm just, even though you think, and I hope, but I think that we're gonna see, he, he sheets gonna be more at the library. I think that, yeah, it's nice to be able to think that Mary's gonna be able to work out this person leaving, but reality is I really think there's gonna be a... We've got a lot of traffic downtown and going into that library, you know, it's just gonna be more-
I, I would agree. I think early on, definitely, it's gonna be forty hours, uh, inside that library. But as time goes on, we reestablish some, some, uh, some more guidelines inside that library. Uh, we'll take care of the problem. I think that it'll, it'll reduce.
Yeah.
I'm hoping to be about a fifty-fifty inside the library, outside walking around.
When even just being right out on the corner of the library will have an influence on what happens on the four corners, uh, let's say around the library in that intersection there where some people just tend to loiter and-
But there's just so much activity going on inside. I had a person that came to me and, uh, the, the, one of the, um, women that was, was there was verbally assaulted. And, you know, it just continues on. I mean, we're talking getting hurt from the age range of kids, clear up. And as long as we still continue to have what we have out here on the streets going into that library for whatever reason-
I would say, though, that our community is not unique in terms of having these problems in a library.
I didn't say that, but then-
But I mean, it's just similar to what a lot of libraries experience.
But are we unique in the fact that we have to now, okay, consent to this is what we're gonna have to now do? You know? I hate to see it bigger this year, maybe retiring. And again, it'll be a catch-up. So, but anyway, that's what my thoughts are.
Any other questions or comments, feedback? Mr. Alshire, you good to go with it?
I'm good.
Mr. Brubaker, you support it?
Yeah, I do because of the value added. I, I think that, I like the idea of the officer being, going outside once in a while. I think it's good to keep him guessing. I think it's good to have an officer patrolling the blocks. Plus, that's sort of the library's general area. That's where a lot of folks are hanging at times. The parking lot in back as well as that plaza, that little plaza in front across from the Stubbe. Um, and I think it's, it's, it's good to circulate for a lot of reasons. And I think people aren't gonna know always when there's a presence in the library or not. I think just the idea that someone's there. It's also gotta be done right. They can't, which I know you know and your officers know. It's gotta be a, sort of a sensitive thing and it's, it's, it, it's a unique thing. It's not quite the same as street policing, I, I would say.
No, it'll be quite different. A lot like our school resource officers. There was an adaptive, adapt phase that they went through. I'd mention, too, that the hospital, or the, the library has two security officers that do work in there part-time. So they're gonna keep them on staff and this officer's gonna work with them and kinda help coordinate, uh, what's going on inside the library. So, uh, they're not gonna, they're gonna maintain that level.
And Councilmember Munson did want me to relate that he does support this as well.
Yes.
The others, the other, if I'm right with this, we have now seven, correct? In the downtown area plus two that are sergeant, lieutenant?
Sergeant, lieutenant.
Okay, and then we have, it's nine total, correct? We have, right, we've got sev- so those other seven, again, you have to remind people and remind me, where is it that they actually patrol in this downtown?
I'll correct that. We just promoted, uh, Officer Plummer. So it's six officers and two supervisors, so a total of eight. Plus, we have our school resource officer, uh, working out of the, uh, Barbara Ingram School. We have our speed camera operator who works in the square all the time. And then, uh, Officer Kendall works out of City Hall. So we, we have, we have quite a few officers that are working in and around downtown.
Well, and I know that, but what I'm getting at is that, yeah, we have, you know, we've got them here. And my concern has always been these other sectors out here. But we have, the area is what, again? What is the area that we have this many patrolling?
In terms of what do you define as downtown, is that what you're saying?
Downtown, right, where, which would be our downtown squad. Is that what it's still called now?
Right, yes.
Okay, so the area.
Yeah, the area they're patrolling is really from about Mulberry Street up to Prospect. And then from, uh, in the south end, it goes as far as Baltimore, just down past the library.
Right.
And then up to Church Street.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so-
It's about that area. It's about an eight-block area.
Right, and we've got a good coverage. Because if we had that in the other sectors, we'd have it covered, but we don't, so... And again, that takes money. Thanks, Mark.
And so you'll get us attachment one?
Either that or I'm gonna amend this to fix it. I think that was a carryover from our school resource officer, uh, MOU. And it probably doesn't exist for this one, so it'll be our site.
All right.
Thank you.
So, uh, if that's the case, then we can put this on for next week as well?
I'll be, we'll, next week even if there isn't attachment seven.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item is our trash and related concerns. We'll try to keep this from getting to be too much trash talk.
Should've just shown pictures, we wouldn't have had to even talk.
I got it.
You have them? Kristen's have them, I've got them here.
Uh, first, I just wanna say this is a very well-formulated memo. It pretty much laid out what the problems are and broke down, you know, what those, uh, how those problems come to be and, and some suggestions that I'm sure council members have seen. Please take it away.
Well, um, from a staff perspective, I, I think-
From the car wash. Go ahead.
I, I think, uh, staff understand the, uh, the effects of having, uh, trash, uh, around neighborhoods. Uh, I know, uh, I experienced it in my neighborhood firsthand. I've met with neighborhood first groups, our staff. Rodney and others have met with the neighborhood first groups. And it's, it's an issue. And it's an issue that, from, uh, at least my perspective, uh, it has to go beyond just enforcement. We have, uh, unfortunately, a culture in, uh, several of our neighborhoods where, um, the, the trash just keeps reoccurring, uh, how people dispose of it. It just, uh, the problem doesn't go away. Uh, so we've worked with, uh, Mark Boyer. So if we kinda take these three issues, um, and, and the first is trash set out on the incorrect day. Um, when we've spoken with the mayor and council, uh, previously, there's, there's always the concern, well, what, what happens to someone who's on vacation and they set their trash out, uh, early that day or something? That, those are concerns that have been raised. Um, so what we're recommending is trash set out on the wrong day is trash set out on the wrong day.
Correct.
And staff are recommending that we follow through with what we developed with Mr. Boyer. And that is a notice of violation, uh, and your first one, your first violation in twelve months, you actually get a notice. The notice says you're not gonna get another notice. And if you set your trash out on the wrong day again, it, it goes to the, the penalty phase. And that we hold the property owners accountable. The problem most often is in the rental properties. Uh, that's just fact. And, um, we have tried, as the memo explains, we've tried to hold tenants accountable. Uh, it doesn't work. And it's not a good use of the inspector's time to be digging through trash bags trying to hold a tenant accountable. So, uh, that effort, we believe, is gonna have a visible effect in addressing trash out on the wrong day. And, um, we've, uh, already have begun, uh, issuing fines, uh, for, for that under this process. And, uh, we have frequent violators. Uh, some of our largest property owners, it's their properties that are causing the, the frequent problems. And, um, a- as we know from previous discussions, it's all about balancing carrots and sticks and education. Uh, so we're gonna continue our education efforts, but ramp up the enforcement. Um, and, and just drive home the point that, that there's, there's no excuse for, for having your trash lay in front of your house every day of the week. Uh, in some neighborhoods, that's exactly what we're dealing with. Right now, we, we've hired two of the, the three additional neighborhood services inspector positions that you authorized. They're in training. Once they're fully up to, to speed, we really think we're gonna impact this- They're in training. Once they're fully up to speed, we really think we're going to impact this aspect of the trash problem. Rod, did you have anything on that aspect?
On this one, on the next due date.
Well, can we stop and make sure we're okay with the council and that approach? One notice to a landlord, then a fine and a citation, a second occurrence at the same property?
Yes, and the second part of this that we want to talk about, still on item number one, is currently we'll be issuing those fines, notices then a fine. And dependent on the amount of trash, the inspector can grab a bag and throw it in the back of the truck. We do not have a fee established to haul the trash away. And what we'd like to do is work with our city attorney and develop a fee whereby, if you're going to have your trash out in front of your house, we're going to take it. We're going to take a photo, we're going to send you a fine, but we're going to take the trash and provide immediate relief to the neighborhood. Throw it in the back of a truck, but we need that ability to then be able to assess a fee for our services of picking the trash up on the day that you chose, as opposed to a day that was established for your neighborhood. So if the mayor and council are good with that concept, we'll work with the city attorney and come back with some amendments to our existing ordinances.
Any objections to those first two items? I'm talking about under number one, the notice and then the subsequent fine and then the immediate relief to the neighborhood with an associated cost.
To the landlord.
To the landlord.
Well, to the property owner, if it's owned or occupied, it'll never.
When, when picking the trash up, if it's, okay, then who are we dealing with? Public Works? Public Works having to come and get it?
No, in most cases now, the inspectors will just grab it.
Well, you have trucks, yeah, because you have...
Yes. And that's one reason why we moved the trucks so the inspectors can just grab and go.
Well, one thing for sure, some of them will probably take two of them to get, to get done with what we've got.
And if it's a large set out, then we will have to work with Public Works.
No, I mean, just the norm, just the norm with trash. I mean, you're talking an apartment building that's got six or more units. You're talking that, you know, some of it, a perfect example is down here on Church and Jonathan. That apartment building right on the corner. Now it's gone from this side clear around to the other side. And no excuse as to we can't put our trash anywhere else but out here because we do not have any more property that we can put it on. But you know what? Do we have anything on the books for that?
Well, and that goes straight into the second item. The containers that trash are in and where you put the containers. Right now, the code permits a container to be a trash bag. That's a leak-proof bag that's capable of holding its contents. I would not recommend that we do away with trash bags and only have trash cans. I really think you need a bag and a can, otherwise, especially on these larger properties with short tendencies and that type of turnover, you're going to end up having cans at stake. And, you know, you have the trash just laying in the cans, no one's going to wash out those cans. So having bags in containers is something that perhaps should be explored. But in hiding the trash containers, whether it's a bag or whatever from public view, the current code says that you're supposed to move them out of public view when it's not set out for pickup. There's an exception to that code, except in the opinion of the code official. And that was written in to have a level of what staff believe was a level of reasonableness. What do you do with a landlocked property? What do you do if the topography's a steep hill going down the sides of the property to the rear? Should there be some exceptions? Staff have been making those judgment calls. We had an elderly person who called in and says, I can't do anything but have, have my trash container outside my front door. I can't take it through my house. What we've heard from some people in the neighborhoods, well, it doesn't matter. Containers aren't supposed to be in public view, don't have them in public view. That really puts the code official in a tight spot. And because they're looking for that middle ground as they often do. So what we did is Mr. Kearns reached out to the Neighborhood First Leadership Group. Councilmember Nine mentioned this last week. We're not suggesting the formation of a task force. We think there's disagreement in the neighborhood, in neighborhoods, over what's reasonable. And what we're seeking is input on what is a reasonable standard? And should it be that trash containers have to be out of view regardless if they're landlocked? Right now, the inspectors are making that judgment call without the input from the neighborhoods. And so we wanted to seek input from the neighborhoods on what is it that their expectations are.
What would a landlocked property do? I know some buildings used to have trash rooms where they just put all the trash in one room before it's time to be set out.
And some do.
It's probably an apartment now.
And some do in the multi-unit buildings. Many of our landlocked properties are single. Especially in the downtown, older sections of the West End. So that's an issue that I think we're going to hear in the neighborhoods, both sides of it. We're going to hear from people saying the container should be out of sight, period. And we're going to hear, well, no, you need to find a reasonable middle ground. And right now, staff are in the middle of that without input from the neighborhoods. So we would ask for direction from the mayor and council to continue our outreach to hear from the neighborhoods on what the expectation is.
You know, the amazing thing to me, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I am. We ended up purchasing, the city did, over $650,000 for recycled bins. And even though I'm seeing the huge amounts of trash, and hopefully it's only two days before trash pickup, the blue bins are the ones that continue to be the eyesores that are either hanging off of the edge or they're hanging this way or that way. And when, you know, I hear, well, this person is so old and this, you know, again, I really don't see that there's not people in the neighborhood that would be willing to assist. And this is why we continue to go down this slippery slope and then we come back with then not a conclusion that is really a conclusion. So when we're dealing with it, and this is what irritates me, because John, we've been over it and over it and over it with Neighborhoods First. And it's like, okay, we're still not at a resolution. You're trying to get there. But again, with big trash bins, little trash bins, we're still seeing them and they're not going to go away. And that to me is one of the, the big, major, major focuses, what I am seeing as I go around the town.
The blue totes.
Yep, the blue ones. We were much better off when we did the bins.
On the totes, when we first put them out, if we found that they were being, as I call them, stored in the right of way, we can do a couple of things. We, we can look at our data that we get from waste management that shows which totes are actually tipping. They know through the little chip that's in the handle that if that tote has been serviced or not. So if they tell us that a tote hasn't had anything in it, if they don't service it, or that it's been contaminated with a lot of trash and other things, we basically just took it away. Because the people weren't using it right, it was sitting in the right of way, we just took it away. We could take away the ones that are sitting in the right of way that are being used for recycling. And that's what I think generally is out there right now. But in the downtown area, there are quite a few of them, everybody knows that. And I guess the only other solution we could offer then is if they're sitting in the right of way, we could take them away, even if they're using them properly or not. Up till now, we haven't done that.
And when you mean in the right of way, do you mean like up against the house?
Up against the house, on the sidewalk, beside the stoops. Where you can see them as you're driving down the street, I guess, maybe.
I mean, I'd rather see blue bins than piles of garbage bags with trash, I mean.
No, no, what I'm, you're not getting what I'm saying. The blue bins continue out. At least on trash day, that amount of trash will get picked up.
Sure.
All right? The blue bins will remain forever.
On days when it's not collection day.
Correct, and it doesn't matter where they're at. Now, the other people that have more control of their ends where they live, I say that's great. But the ones that we're blessed with that are not, then it's a matter of you do what you need to do. And then perhaps by touching that, you're going to get in trouble if you indeed take it to where their property is.
Well, where are these people putting their trash? Seems to me that they're putting, if they have a place to put their trash, then they have a place to put their bin.
I think the dynamic is very different between the defined downtown and outside of it. Because in the defined downtown, what occurs is you have X number of apartments in the building and not all of those residents utilize a holding area during the week. They'll come out and right to the right or left of the stoop, they'll drop the white bag of trash, you know, and they could sit there. With the expectation that now it is at the curb. And it is typically next to the blue recycling bin that everybody sort of jointly uses in some of these places. And, and there isn't, at least that I've seen, a consistent use of that blue bin. So you might have eight apartments and it may get a little bit of use or it may get too much use. And therefore people say, well, I'm not going to take my stuff down there. It's full every time by the time I get there. You know, because apartment X is using it. And whereas I think on the converse of that, outside of those neighborhoods, and there isn't. There is not a place to take the blue bins. Just their sheer size to get them through some of the, the causeways between some of the places, you're not getting them through. And so they store them back against the wall with the thought process in a number of occasions that it's at the curb. In other words, and what will happen sometimes is the trash hauler will say, well, that's not at the curb. You know what I mean? I'm not taking that trash because it's back against the house. And so then there'll be occasion where there's altercation because they're left behind, or you'll see that outside of the urban.
Is one of the solutions in this area to go back to the bins? Were we having this problem when we were using bins?
I think there's a couple of solutions. The first is, and I viewed this memo in the reverse course. Because I think this is what's happening in the reverse course. The bags are the inherent issue, because the bags piled around the bin make the bin look worse. And the bags piled around the bin for that duration create the atmosphere, the trash blows because the cats get in them or whatever. And that creates the root issue. And I think that from the outset, we need to resolve the issue of the bags being set out for extended periods. And in my conversation with you the other week, it was noted that, and I think this speaks to this issue of use of alleys for trash service, I don't think it's logical to have people go 300 feet back into some of these alleys and do it. And the trucks aren't getting back there. But I think we have to have some serious review of the size of commercial establishments and the size of apartments, especially in the urban core, that we are providing residential trash service for. Because at some point, the residential structure just gets too big for it to hold that volume on that regular basis with that transfer of population over and over. You know what I mean? The person in apartment C may have, you know, some religious approach to this process, but it changes, you know, every time. And so I think that in this defined area, and I look at it this way, I live on a larger lot, obviously, in, in, you know, further out of the city. And I, I use the yard waste program much more than you're going to find in the urban core. And I have no problem as a person that uses that part of that city service offsetting, if you will, in the cost process, the necessity for bins in the urban core where folks have a greater need of that type of service, if that makes sense. Because most of the folks in the urban core largely don't use the yard waste service, but it's included in that, that cost provision. And so I think that in this core, you have to, number one, you got to get rid of the bags. And that gets rid of the trash blowing around and it gets rid of setting around these blue bins. And number two, I think you have to have some type of city issued bin process where it's picked up once a week, just like the blue bins are. And you need to define a maximum in these types of commercial entities and residential structures that it's provided for. In fact, I told you, I think last year the state passed the law that any residential structure of 10 units or more now is required to provide an onsite either disposal or recycling or both, I'm not sure which, service as part of their building. And I think we need to look at that. And I think what it will do is, let's say you've got, it'll allow folks then in these apartment buildings to keep the blue bin and let's say a brown bin of the same size right next against the building, only for up to, let's say, 10 units. And anything beyond that, you've got to put a dumpster or whatever in the back area. You know, I think you said we're servicing places as high as 30 units.
Not anymore. We're probably around 10.
And I think you got to look at that because as you point out, and I think Church and Jonathan is a prime example, that's a picture I showed you. It just can't handle it because the reality is, as we'll see in this sidewalk thing later on, sidewalks are two and three feet wide and they're just not able to handle the volume. But I think that gets rid of that trash problem. I agree.
But it doesn't get rid of the bin problem.
I don't think you're going to get rid of that. I don't think you're going to be able to put the bin in an area unless you specify in each structure that they've got to have a holding area, you know what I mean? For X number of bins per total number of units. In other words, I think part of the problem in folks not using the blue bin downtown is, again, you're sort of guessing at how many to issue. And I think you have to say, okay, let's say it's a 10-unit apartment building downtown. And for each 10-unit apartment building, it gets issued, you know, three bins. And I don't think we've looked at it in that detail, if you will, and had those types of conversations to know what the, what the user, you know, rate is. And I think you alluded to that in terms of tipping measurements. And I think you need to find that out. And I think that you got a 10-unit apartment, you say, okay, you're getting three blue bins, you're getting three brown bins. You know what I mean? And that's what we're going to use in this area.
And that's how we issued the blue ones originally. I think it was one 95 gallon, the real big ones for every, I think it was three units. Let me send that out. Now, yeah, we can do something similar with that with trash receptacles.
But I do, what I kind of hear you saying is that in some places we would not be able to get rid, you'd still have bins sitting out, but instead of just a blue bin, you'd have a blue bin and a green bin or whatever color it is for trash. But quite frankly, I mean, and I understand where you're coming from Penny, but I'd rather see those bins.
No, because the bins aren't put where they're supposed to be. Everybody's saying, oh, they're going to be put here and put there. Look.
Well, in cases where they can't, I mean, there's just some places where you're going to have to be able to put them in the front.
I think that the blue bins stand out.
Well, I'd like to know exactly how many of these places are actually doing the recycling.
Well, I think that's part of the issue. And that's what I said, I think part of the issue, you see the bins, I think the reason that they stick out in some instances is because on an entire weekly basis, there are any number of them on any number of streets you walk, especially during the evening where you'll see where five or six bags have sort of set out around it and it sort of looks like, you know, this bin is at the upper center of where you just set your trash every day, all week. It's not working because three days into that, you get it blown around. And as I said the other week, then you get piles of leaves or piles of snow, and that's the other picture I showed you where, then it just collects within those and then it makes the eight or 10 pieces of trash that are blowing around in those leaves or in that snow, make it look even that much worse at a streetscape level.
So that's the issue of getting set out too many days ahead of one deflection.
And in bags.
In bags.
And I hear you saying you shouldn't get rid of bags, and I agree, you shouldn't get rid of bags being put in those bins. But just as the city affords me the opportunity to be a higher user of yard waste, which you see in all these neighborhoods, you know what I mean? And they sit out, you know, at times, because it takes longer to collect that, that volume. I don't have any problem if it assists this issue of paying my fair share to get bins put in these areas for a higher rate of type of use.
You're talking about trash totes in the downtown.
And for clarity, I'm not suggesting that we just keep bags. I'm suggesting if we go to totes, we also require, we require bags and totes.
I spent two years with a buddy who had a small trash business, helping him out on a weekly basis. And I can tell you very frankly, it was all outside of the city. And this issue isn't just limited to the boundaries of the city. This issue is countywide. And our efforts, in my opinion, on this specific subject are light years ahead of how it operates outside of the city.
I think for the most part, when a lot of the people, if they still are the... I think for the most part, when a lot of the people, if they still are the ones here that ordered the bins the size, did not realize that they were smaller ones, that they were the ones.
Small ones available.
Right, that they were the ones that really could be handled a lot better, because not every household will have that huge bin filled in a week's time.
Right.
So, you know, I mean.
Even if we talk to the large unit places and issue bins.
Look, I have, I, I have from all ends of town.
Where folks can have them and go dump them into the larger one that's in that holding area. I, I, I agree, I don't think folks know that there's still that opportunity to maybe get an issue of a smaller one that they can dump into the big one.
But you know, quite honestly, the ones that the city provides for the neighborhoods, the surrounding area down here, clear out to Mulberry, are they out of your way? No, the metal ones, Janet, the metal ones that sit on the corner. Do you have them on your area? Is it on Antietam? Like, okay, the ones that are the attractive trash containers that people will come from their apartments or their homes and say, oh gee, guess what? I can go ahead and clean my car out here, so I'll go ahead and dump the stuff in here. But I can say one thing for the green containers, they at least are attractive. That's the only thing that I can say, because as far as resolving the trash.
So I think you were asking if you want the mayor council's approval to continue outreach with the neighborhoods and on the second point here about the containers. I think you're hearing that's, I think everyone would agree, yes, you should continue that support.
And do you want me to research the cost of issuing trash containers?
I think that would be helpful.
Uniform trash containers in the downtown, I think we're still looking about.
Sure.
And I can come back with that at a later date. And then the issue of the blue totes that sit out. How you want me to handle that?
Again, I, I, I think that, that if you remove the actual bag trash issue on the street, I think it'll assist in resolving the blue tote issue.
Okay.
Not to say that I don't think the out-of-sight process isn't a good effort, I just don't see it as the key to being the issue of, of impact that I think folks see and, and, and encounter on a daily basis.
And, and we have heard from, from some folks in the neighborhoods that if the trash was kept neatly.
Mm-hmm.
And that the, e- even places that have cans, if the cans weren't broken or overflowing with trash, then, then that would be better. So, so we have heard from, from some neighbors saying that that would be a good step.
Sure would be, and, and I would think the recycler or trash hauler would be much happier with bins than bags.
And, and I'll tell you, when, when we looked at the issue in Frederick County over the provision of recycling, because the argument after this state law passed, I guess back in October, was the municipalities were saying, well, the county recycling program, because the county provides it over there, much like we provide it here, the argument was, well, if the county isn't going to provide it to these 10-unit or more places, what are we going to do? Because now we're going to place this huge burden on these apartment units. And what we found in that research is that the, the, the county-issued program was actually more expensive in most cases than what an apartment unit owner of a large, a larger apartment structure could get a, a private single bin for. And, and I only say that because I think we do need to look at, at, at some maximum number to say of what we can provide residential service for. Because if, if you get up to the 15-unit, like I said, I think that you're going to find that it's going to be cheaper, you know, $30 a pop versus paying that dumpster, I think you're going to find that that property owner of that 15-unit place is going to find it's cheaper for him to have a dumpster.
Yeah.
For recycling and, and refuse than, than it is pay that $30 fee per unit to set that out.
Yeah. And if they have a place to put a dumpster on the site or they have a trash room, we let them out of the program, because it's, it's cheaper for them and it's better for us, because we don't see all that sitting down on the sidewalk.
Do we have any information about how many possible places like that we have in town in this area that we're talking about?
I could, I could figure, I could give you some.
That might be helpful to know, and then maybe.
In addition to getting outreach with the neighborhoods, maybe do some outreach with some of these apartment building owners that, you know.
I know.
Have a discussion with them.
I know after this law passed, some jurisdictions had, like if there was apartment, let's say that there was one with eight and one with 12 and one with 10, there was some where three of them went together and said, okay, you know what I mean? There's only one location in the rear of these three that work, let's share that cost among the three parties and.
We had to have to break down the street here, and it worked out well. Because one property had a place for a dumpster, the other two didn't, but they went together and it took it all off the sidewalk. We opted lit, we left them out of our program, but I think it was to our benefit in the end.
So we could explore maybe more opportunities to do that.
Yeah, sure.
So just to summarize, I'm hearing that we have council support for the recommendation that we institute violations, a notice of violation to the property owner for the first related code violation in a 12-month period. A second and subsequent violation would result in a $200 fine municipal infraction. So we can move, staff can move forward on those provisions. The other one was the immediate relief to the neighborhood where if it's set out on an incorrect day, staff could recover and take the trash away and then institute a fee, assess a fee to the property owner for that.
And that'll require an ordinance amendment.
Right. So there's support on those things. And then the other issue is that we'll get estimates for trash totes and do more outreach with neighborhoods and possibly some property owners that might be able to go a private route or work with neighboring property owners to do something on a, on the private side.
And, and the, the last part, Mr. Mayor, we would utilize the same approach for trash set out early for loose trash on or about the property. So if there's a sanitation violation, people just have trash not set out, but laying in their yard or whatever, and we'd give a notice.
Oh, man.
And.
My kids leave stuff set out every day.
No. This is trash that continues.
Oh, that I'd like to throw away.
We pick your kids up.
Yeah.
Do we need to clarify that on yard waste, though?
Yeah.
You know, Saturdays, you'll see people fill up 15, 20 bags as they rake their lawns.
Oh, yeah.
And they leave them at the curb then until Tuesday or Wednesday, because they don't want to cart them somewhere behind their house and then cart them back up to the front. So I think that, that's, again, one of these reasonableness standards that we'll need to at least sort through.
Well, yard waste doesn't create an odor if it's sitting out for five days or.
But if it's setting out at the curb and we have got rain, then those bags are going to go, okay? And that is the problem.
Do we ever get any?
Am I the only one that gets the trash complaints? You walk, Munson sees it, Lou has a straight way of going to work and back.
Why do we get complaints about the?
But honestly, I.
Right, I don't care about the yard waste, yeah.
You know?
That's what you have.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be unreasonable to say to somebody, if you have 20 bags of leaves that you raked up or whatever it is, that you're going to store those 20 bags somewhere behind your house or whatever and then haul them all back out on another day, I think that's unreasonable.
Well, you've already moved them one time to where it's going to go, and then you take them out trash night.
Yeah, but if you are a good raker, you plan such that you only have to haul them across the sidewalk.
Well, I got news for you, when it gets cleaned up, we clean it up, we put it where it has to be, and that's what happens in the neighborhood. All right?
10-4.
Look, your look at trash and my look at trash and debris is just totally different. That's all I can say.
My issue with yard waste is the amount of leaves that gather in the public right of way during, during.
Yeah, I think the bigger problem is people that blow them right out into the gutter.
And I think, and I think we'll see more of that if we say.
I agree.
There's a fine because you put your bags out on Saturday.
I, I've never had it to play with, putting yard waste out or.
No. Like I said, my issue is.
And when it usually happens is you call.
Actual trash.
Understood, sir. It's a limited fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for that very fruitful discussion.
Thank you all very much.
Mayor, can we jump to 10 instead of nine only because you're doing such a fine job of being early and I'm expecting at least one person for?
Sure, absolutely. We'll consider the City Park Holiday Lighting Concept.
The, in City Park, we have, over the last several years, have put a very nice display on the, what I call the west side or the west bank of the lower lake over by the Fine Arts Museum. There's a picture on the, on the slide, so it's phase one, of what it currently looks like. The problem we're having right now is that the electric capacity there is pretty well maxed out, we can't add anything else. And some people, I think, would say, although it looks nice, it might be looking a tad cluttered as well. So in working with the.
Those people are Scrooges, by the way.
We've heard that.
I said, it's Neil's group.
And working with the Historic City Park Neighborhoods First Group, who have obviously great pride and ownership in the park like we do, they came up with a couple of suggestions and in working with them, we thought we'd bring those in to see if you want to pursue them any further, and if you do, we'll study them a little bit harder and we'll try to get something implemented by the next holiday season. The first idea was kind of a drive-through concept of the park, which basically, instead of kind of massing everything at one location, which maybe is one in behind the Hager House or something like that, we came up with maybe as many as eight or 10 locations, 10 locations throughout the park where you could literally drive through the park, walk through the park, and be able to see displays at these different locations. This, the electric is available at six of those locations, we'd have to do some service upgrades at four of them, and we put that in the upcoming CIP plan for the upcoming year, if it's, if it's something that you want to move forward. We have about 25 silhouettes now, we can add silhouettes down the road, and they would just be placed at these different stations. Couple of issues that come to mind with that, with that project would be just the management of the traffic, which we'd have to think through, and that there are, there's been discussion about actually closing it and allowing like a charity or somebody to, let's say like the Red Cross or somebody would, would collect money for people to go through on opening night to see the display. The problem with that would be the traffic control, and then we always have uses that are always in there, like the apartments, the Fine Arts Museum, we have to make sure that we provide access for them. So there's things like that, and I'm saying that we have to think through if we want to go that route, if it's something you want to do. The second idea is the idea of having uplights in the light, in the trees that are on the west bank. And there's some pictures that are in here that were put together by the Neighborhoods First Group. The one would be uplights in the trees by the museum that could actually be done year round. These would be LED lights that would shine up into the trees to give it a, a nice effect on the bank, and then the trees over there. That is the second proposal on the back page, this, a little bit more costly, excuse me, because we have to run conduits and electric to, to the various trees and then put the lights there to mount up in the trees, but those costs are shown there. And then the third part of that would be to actually put lights on the lake or a fountain on the lake. We're talking a few years down the road, because right now, the problem we have with a fountain on the lake is it's so shallow, the lake needs to be dredged out, as we've talked about before. It's so shallow that the, the pump of the, of the fountain actually sucks up the mud at the lake bottom, and it plugs it up, and we can't put a bigger fountain in there than what we have now. But the idea is if we had a bigger fountain someday, you could light that up.
Do like a Bellagio water and light show.
Exactly, exactly. So that's the proposals very quickly. I guess we just wanted to get some feedback, if you're interested in pursuing these or not, and if you are, we'll come back with more details later.
I'm not interested, number one. I think that that traffic management would become a nightmare.
Could be.
Yeah, I don't like the idea of closing down the street and charging people. I think there's, it would be a logistical nightmare, I think.
I'm not interested in charging people either. I mean, I think that, you know, I used Williamsport as a, an example, I mean, there, it's pretty clear cut, you're not impacting anybody that lives, you, you basically drive through, it's, you know, a, a, a one-minute drive and you're out.
I, I like the, the phase three, the, the white lighting in the trees. I know, I'm assuming you're talking about actually putting lighting in the trees instead of just lighting up the trees or not?
The proposal was to just uplight them.
Just uplight. Okay. So I don't have, I don't know how that would work. But having said that, I, I am a, I firmly support expanding the lighting in City Park at Christmas, in, in some way or another. I, I'm glad to hear that we're maxed out, because I, I didn't wonder, it'd be nice to have some more. So I, I think it's a great idea and I would like to see more, in, in whatever manner it's done. I know anybody who's been out to Dale, Colorado, they do the actual like lights in the trees year-round, and it's quite a.
You're talking about like lights that are sort of wrapped all around the tree?
Uh-huh, yeah.
That is what phase two picture kind of looks.
That's what it looks like, but that's not what I'm hearing.
Is that what they're actually posing in? Well, no, it's in phase three.
No, they're proposing this lights lighting up the trees from the bottom up versus.
Right, so it's basically eliminated.
Versus having the LEDs on them, which would be much more expensive, I'm sure.
Yes.
And that, that would be something that could be done, maybe a tree at a time over a period of years.
I'd be most interested in just finding a way to expand adding ornaments in the same general area. I think we could maybe find some ways to do that.
We definitely could, yeah.
And, and that's what I'd be interested in doing, upgrading the electrical service, which probably is due for that anyhow. I think it's a great display having it all in one place where you can look across the lake. And other stuff to do with the park, I, I guess I'd consider separately from that, and I'd say I'd be against it, I just have to know, you know, what it was and all that. But to me, the first priority, we have a festival that really works, that people really like, and the kids can see it all in one place and compare them. To me, that works.
And I could.
That's, that's what I would like to go with for now.
To expand that area.
To expand that area and fix it and, you know, fix the electric, update the electric and.
And I could also see lighting more oriented on the walking trails in the interior of the park than created for drive-through. I, I would much rather see people walking through the park to see lights than queuing up on Virginia Avenue to drive through the park. I think.
Yeah, we want to get people out walking.
I think we want to get people out walking.
And it would look good for Virginia Avenue.
No, no, I think it's an excellent.
So I'm not against that, but I don't want to hold up doing the, the lake front area while we solve that.
No, I, I agree more.
Necessarily, maybe there's.
But, but I'm just saying, if I were looking for expanding the area, it would be towards the walking arenas, not the driving arenas.
We could do that. We could do.
I just would like to see what the light looks like showing the tree.
Up in the tree?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think the, the tree lighting would interfere with the ornaments, it could.
Yeah.
Would interfere with the ornaments.
I don't think you'd do them both.
Go down at the same time, yeah.
If you're going to uplight the trees, we'd have to move the silhouettes.
It's just a matter of trying to do placement, but I think that it would just give you a nice feel of having that.
But I agree, you could have a nice effect by taking existing walkways and lighting them, some combination of tree lighting and lighting along the walkways and things like that.
Okay. So I'm hearing kind of increase the silhouettes in that general area, but then throughout the park on the walking trails, we could add uplights or some other things like that.
Yeah, some combination of it, isn't that what you were saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I agree.
But the idea of uplighting on the bank in front of the museum, that could be a year-round thing, maybe except for during the holiday season?
Yeah.
It could be.
So there's support for that as well?
Because what is it that the museum has that's lit? It's right there.
They light the wall.
Yeah, it's the wall.
Is it?
In the front.
Do they make, would solar-powered lights be possible for these uplights so that you're not really?
It's night day.
Well, no, but the sun during the day powers the lights for the nighttime, I don't know.
But I don't know what solar.
I don't know how reliable those are or cost-effective.
Yeah, we'd just have to look to see if, if that's something that would be enough to do what we, the effect that we want.
Right.
And that's what I'm looking for, is the effect, especially with the trees, because I think the trees are beautiful when they're lit.
Okay, any other questions? Rodney, do you need any other clarity from us on this?
No, I think that helps. I'll come back with more details later on, but this gets us started.
Okay. I think it at least tells you what we don't want.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's take a five-minute recess, please.
All right. That's a good call.
All right, we're back. And the next item on our agenda is the city proposal and plan for the Massey property. Our county administrator is here. I'd like to invite him to the table. I appreciate him attending the meeting on behalf of the county. This has been a-
Hi, Greg.
Topic of conversation that has come up before. Greg, I don't, have you had the pleasure of reading the city's memo on this topic prior to the meeting?
No.
Okay. I guess we could outline the parameters of it. We understand that the, obviously, the county owns the property. There's been a discussion about perhaps the county transferring the property to the city. In the process, it would need to be subdivided so that the, to account for the entrance to the library, because currently it's all considered one property. And obviously, the entrance to the library has to be maintained. And then the idea is that the city would then be responsible for the demolition of the two old residential-type structures on the east side of the property. And the, and I guess the, I'm not really certain if it's the intent of the council to acquire what would end up being both parcels, the two separate parcels, including the showroom. I know the priority of the council is to deal with the blighting influence of those two residential properties, based on our discussions before. So if anyone wants to chime in?
Mayor, I think, you know, thank you very much for coming, Greg. And we also have a representative synagogue, Caramanda Segalcan, because the synagogue is very interested in this also. You're right, Mayor, there are two separate properties. There's what I'd call the Massey Building, which is the old car dealership property, and then what we would call the blighted properties, which I think are self-explanatory. And I think clearly it's the desire of the council to immediately end the blight, which means not to couple these two properties together, but to keep them separate so we can do- I would like to think that if the ultimate plan of this body is for a community park on the blighted properties, I think that's in conjunction with what the county's thought processes or desires would be, among other things, on these blighted parcels. The Massey Building is obviously a whole different tune. That's not a building that anybody anticipates being taken down. And it's a building that I think the county and the city both have a desire to see some type of economic development at that building. And therefore, there's a lot of things that could be discussed on how we deal with that building. But in the meantime, if we could ask the county to go through the subdivision and consider deeding those blighted properties over to us without the connection to the Massey Building, other than having discussions so we can get that resolved also. Therefore, we could start with the plans of demolition immediately. The faster these buildings come down, the better it is for everybody in the community there. There is a desire for, I know, for the congregation to partner with the city of Hagerstown and/or the county in the construction of what would like to see is already a concept of the Thomas Kennedy Memorial Park, which would be a park celebrating tolerance and inclusion, which would be a community park for that community and the entire city. So I think that's what we're looking at, and I think one of the big issues originally was, can we get the county commissioners to split costs with us and this and that? And I think we've all come to the recognition that there is a desire to expedite this. And expediting means making it simple. Making it simple means not starting to make monetary requests. So I think, hopefully, that sums up what we want to do, is we want to get these blighted properties over to us. We take them down, and at the same time, we continue to talk about the Massey Building and what the best plans and cooperative effort is for that.
And I know, Greg, I guess maybe everyone could benefit from a little history of how the county came to acquire these properties. I know I was on the planning commission when there was a housing development that was being proposed where the library parking lot currently exists. And then through a series of transactions, the city contributed money to the library project. The county used that money to acquire that property. And as I recall, the intent for Baltimore Street fronting properties was for economic development. I'm assuming that continues to be an interest for the county, at least where it's possible, along Baltimore Street there. But maybe you could shed light on the county's position?
I can. The, uh, the plan is going through several iterations. Of course, it began with the prior board, at which time, I believe there was some discussion of the city and county jointly doing something with the property. Transition of the property was always an issue, because as a government entity, from the county's perspective, we can transfer it to another government entity, but we can't just give it away based on who we think is best, for example. Or we don't have a process in place that statutorily allows us to actually transfer the property to a non-government entity without going out for bid. Boards came and went, next board came in. The discussion was surrounding giving the city the property. The board ultimately decided that they want nothing to do with the property. They would like to see it developed in an economic development manner, but they would like to see that be in accordance with the city's wishes as far as what you want to see be on that property. And that, given our inability to dispose of it other than to the city, they would like to give it to the city. The discussion then centered on if the city does not want to take the property in whole as subdivided with both pieces, that they prefer to sell it outright and be done with it. They were asked to reconsider that and came back and determined that if the city is interested in subdividing both pieces and taking them in whole, that they would turn those over to the city at no cost and be done with the properties altogether, given that the city would, of course, use part of it as a public purpose. That was discussed at the cities they chose. And the remaining part would be used for an economic development purpose and not sold to someone for that purpose, but used as part of the economic development process for whoever ultimately occupies that structure.
Any questions? Councilmember Alshar?
Well, first, I had forgotten that Parcell B and C, I refer to them as that on the map, but the two with the residential structures, I'd forgotten that that part actually goes through to Locust Street. So it's actually, I don't know, a minor good thing when you're talking about development of a public park, because I think we've had conversations about having our sort of public spaces link between the blocks. And it's just interesting that that parcel provides that opportunity. The second is Parcel A being the more complicated piece. I mean, I guess for me, I had envisioned this occurring in a fairly simple manner. And it's simply as it appears that the city has some ability that the county may not for disposal of this property in more creative manners. And for us, I would envision acceptance of Parcel A. Obviously, the goal was to tear down B and C, turn it into some public space, especially if it has some cooperative effort with neighboring organization. But that Parcel A would follow our, what I would say, adopted property disposal process, whereby we would put it out there through an RFP process for economic development, and we would get those RFPs back, just like we do on other properties. And we would vet those responses. And I think the question that we probably had in any number of discussions we've had, you know, individually amongst our respective bodies, is sort of what happens after a certain timeframe? Let's say it goes 12 months and nobody wants it, which I don't anticipate that being the case when you're attempting to give away, you know, a building of this size. But in the event that that occurs, I guess my base question is, are there any? Does the county anticipate placing any stipulations upon that process of transfer, which would require after a certain period it either be returned or any stipulations which, if not used for economic development purposes, in which it would be required to be returned? Which I don't have an issue with either.
I don't think any of us do.
The stipulations that they discussed were, within a 12-month period, be subject to an economic development project, and that could be the beginning, not necessarily completion of. And if that were not the case, where it was not going to be used for that-
If that weren't fruitful?
Right, then it would be returned and sold, simple disposal. The bottom line is, the commissioners are not interested in retaining the properties or the liability associated with those, if nothing, is to be done with them. And they feel that really, for them to make a decision on what should be on those properties is overstepping what might be, given what the council may want. And since the library project is now coming to the final, final close, and since the whole intent of purchase of this property was for parking that was necessary due to the expansion of the library structure, the remaining outlier is disposal of excess property related to that project.
And just to be clear, we have a process, it's the competitive negotiated sale process, so it's not exactly like an RFP, but basically the city puts the property out there. But that, it also gives us a little bit of leverage, if you will, in terms of trying to find an entity or a business or an economic development activity that is aligned with our vision and goals for downtown. And quite frankly, I mean, I think all of us are aware of some of the opportunities that have been discussed in confidential manners, you know, because they're business, development-related. But there are lots of ideas about what could happen here, lots of really good ideas. So I think I would agree that, or hope, that it wouldn't be on the market, so to speak, for more than 12 months, it would be able to identify a project. But it is certainly a liability that the city would be taking on, especially with Parcel A, with the old showroom, because it is, my understanding, that it needs some level of upgrading in order to make it work for anybody.
And I'm not speaking for anybody else here at the table when I say these couple of things. One is, if that process of competitive negotiated sale includes somebody taking this property off of our hands for free, I'm fine with that. That's just me speaking. Number two, if the property isn't acquired in such manner for economic development, I'm fine with demolition, whether it be by this party or the county or some cooperative effort there too. And number three, I would prefer, at the end of the day, that if it were a decision between demolition and some proposal from another public entity, to have an interest in how the county and/or city government can have some cooperative effort for some type of multimillion-dollar publicly-funded redevelopment, I'm still in favor of demolition. So I'm just laying it out for folks that that's where I'm at on Property A.
The only thing I would say, I'm assuming, Christian, when you say that, so that especially Greg and the commissioners understand, you would never consider just giving this away to a speculative developer. You would consider, for instance, we've had discussions about a specific business. We had a good business where the finances meant that it had to be given away in order for that business to succeed. I'm assuming that's what you're talking about?
Yes.
Versus just turning it over to some developer who says,
Right.
"I'll try to figure out something." And, because I think we all agree with you, that if we had the right business come in, given the amount of money that needs to be put into the building-
Or some quasi-public agency that says, "Hey, I've got a great use for it. I'll take it off your hands. By the way, it's going to cost you guys some sum to help."
The only issue, and I think we need to look into it, is, strange as it may sound, from everything that I know, the building that would seem to be, look like the half-historic significance of the homes, which do not, and the building that certainly doesn't look like it has any significant significance of historical nature, apparently does, and that's the Massey Building. So I don't, I think we may be stuck with a building that we can't tear down. I don't know if that's accurate or not.
I think if it really made sense, you could find a way to do that.
Okay. But I would have no problems at all with what Greg is suggesting.
But obviously, there could be, you know, let's take the eastern parcel. Parcel, it's not even a parcel yet, it's part of the thing, but talking about the Massey parcel, which could have a lot of complications, a lot of issues. To what extent, I heard you say that a year, or at least a year, could be well into a, could be into a process for disposition. Given the gestation of projects downtown, I don't think a year is a lot of time, to be honest. Things take a long time downtown. I'm not going to sit here and argue for more, as long as it's understood that I'm sure we'll have a process underway. I'm sure we'll have one underway pretty quickly. Are the commissioners, is there any right of approval involved? Or just what is, you know, what if, what do we do when we have a project? Is it in order to get the deed transferred? We have to say, "Here's what we'd like to do"?
No, the intent of the commissioners is that the property belongs to the city, and the city has full control over an economic development project that goes there.
Okay.
As long as it's not-
Yeah, that's my-
For example, sold to a developer that then makes money.
Assuming you don't want us to provide it to a public entity that then turns around and comes back to you guys and says, "Hey, I got the property. We need $2 million bucks to-"
Correct, that was discussed.
"-fix it up for this."
And I'm also certainly assuming, along with your saying, Marty, that the commissioners, as long as we are actively involved in trying to do something with this property. I mean, we look at the Tusinge Warehouse, and we know how long that thing took, but we also know that everybody looked at that, that there was a serious, significant, ongoing effort to market that property. And my, I suspect the commissioners are mainly interested in seeing a sincere effort to go out and market this property.
As I said, I think we are in trouble meeting that criteria, the criteria of having the-
And I'm convinced that they will be, that this is all being done in good faith, and we won't run into, we won't run into those kind of problems, mainly for one reason and one reason only, because they won't want it back.
Yeah, I mean, the commissioners, at this point, without soliciting something, have no use for the property as far as county operations. So therefore, we don't have the ability to just solicit an economic development client that we can turn it over to.
Understood.
Therefore, we can turn it over to another government agency that's chartering and has that ability, which, of course, would be the city. And the commissioners, they're genuinely interested in seeing something there that the city wants to see there also, because that ties right into the whole city center and the whole initiative downtown, which, you know, they'd like to continue to support in other ways. So with this, it would just be a transfer to the city. The city would have, after subdivided, would have both parcels to public purpose, for example, the park, and economic development purpose on the other parcel.
Are they stipulating public purpose for the eastern parcel?
No, they're just saying that they had heard that that may be one of the uses that you would consider.
That's one of the possibilities, but we haven't formally discussed it.
Right, I think they're okay with that.
Yeah, they had discussed economic development, but, yeah, they put a caveat on that, that if indeed you wanted to use a park for a public purpose such as a park, that's okay, it doesn't all have to be economic development. That was the discussion in that regard.
There was a question in the memo about whether there was any prior use of state or federal funds by the county related to the Massey property. Are you aware of any that, off the top of your head?
There was none.
Okay. Because we ran into that issue in terms of the CDBG money and having to pay ourselves back.
Yep.
Okay. And then in terms of, Penny, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make two statements.
Sure.
The plus side on this is because we have a lot of incentives. That's why I'm really sincerely hoping that those of interest will come forward. I mean, there's been more now offered. And I know that the one business that I hope that does want it, because it would be a great, great venture. But I do want to thank the commissioners, because this has been a long, hard drive. And I know that I've made a lot, a lot of phone calls, but I've not made enemies, thank God. Not yet. But thank you, Greg, for at least being able to get it to where it needed to be gotten.
Certainly.
And, you know-
And just facilitate.
Yeah, so-
Don't make the decisions.
At least we've got it this far, and that's good.
Probably October, at least, September, October, it was prior boards.
Right. Yep. But thanks again.
Appreciate it.
Indeed. So, and just to review next steps for the council, so staff will work on, working with the county on drafting the agreements, and then, of course, the next steps that are, that are on the, on the back of the memo, making sure there's no restrictions on demolition. But they'll come back- But they'll come back with the adoption schedule and more information in terms of identifying sources of funds and the like.
And then, if we're going to work with the synagogue council member, we should probably arrange some discussions there.
That would be great.
To develop the concept of the park. Our city attorney, Mark Boyers, drafted two contracts, the way he envisions it is, one for what you're saying is parcels B and C, and one for A, since it would be subdivided by the county.
Yeah.
And so two contracts there. And then, I think the mayor summarized well the next steps.
And then, hopefully, as we move forward, and there's an economic development purpose, we could have other opportunities to help support that through hotel rental fund, or whatever the place may be, to help someone to maybe move into that facility. So hopefully, we'll have other opportunities to partner with you. That would be good, because I was going to remind my broken record thing about, there are budget implications here. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but we may have to juggle things to make everything happen.
We're juggling.
Well, the sale price is...
Yeah, thank you.
We're juggling.
We're rolling out there.
We're juggling.
Please thank the Board of County Commissioners for us on helping us move this forward. Thank you for being here.
We certainly will, they just finished a meeting, and they, again, asked me to also express their appreciation for working together on this, and their intent to help support the city on future downtown initiatives, and desire to possibly, as I know you would like to do also, to get together and talk about these things, and look at priorities, and what the city council would like to see as downtown priorities, and, you know, help move those things forward.
That would be great.
Now that Wyble's gone, we can get something done.
Don't be antagonistic.
You said that, I love him. I sat with him for four years, I love him.
He has cameras on, I mean...
I know, I'm open to season.
Phil's laughing.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, thanks, Greg.
Anything else, please let us know, and do what we can.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Zerzka.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the livable streets policy and design guidelines.
You're close to going on four hours here, so I'll go through this.
We're actually a half an hour ahead of schedule, so I think we're doing pretty good.
That's okay.
This doesn't have to be complicated, in that basically what complete streets, or livable streets, we use the name interchangeably, what they do is, it's a street that allows for pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and transit riders to be able to utilize the street. For decades, communities like Hagerstown and other communities around the nation, they built incomplete streets. There were streets that focused on one thing, and that was motorists. As our culture changes, accommodating these other uses is becoming more and more important. We have documents that I mentioned here in the memo that stated that we should be developing a complete streets policy, or livable streets policy. I ran this through the planning commission, the board of traffic and parking, and the bicycle advisory committee, and they've all endorsed the plan. So real quickly, I'm going to show you upon the screen, just a brief PowerPoint that kind of summarizes the guidelines that I put, I put the entire guideline in your packet, but I'll show you quickly what this involves. So complete streets are really for everyone, as I said before, pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and transit riders. By adopting a complete streets policy, what you would be doing is directing people like myself, or transportation planners and engineers, that we would routinely design and operate the entire right-of-way to enable safe access for all users. So what that means is, when we build a new street, which we don't do that often, but when we repave a street, which we do quite often, we would look at that street, and we try to make it as safe as we can for not only motorists, which we have always done, but also continue to try to do our best to make it as pedestrian-friendly as possible, cycling-friendly as possible, and then also looking at transit, which is something I can honestly say we've probably never have done. And we need to start doing that. So basically, it's high-level direction you're giving us, just to say that we want to accommodate these different modes, but it's going to be kind of incremental on each street as we pave a street, or, you know, approach a street like that, that we would have longer-term results. So, as the examples I gave, on the left was a sidewalk that ended and didn't really consider where the pedestrians are supposed to go, versus more of a complete street on the right, that has nice sidewalks, bike lanes, has a transit lane, which I don't know if we'd ever get that far, but it's a complete street, it accommodates all those modes. And who wants complete streets? I mean, it's, from what we read, and what we see here, and what we see, you know, young people want to drive less, they're looking for other transportation options, they like to cycle, they like to walk, and we've talked about that on other type of projects, and older folks, too, who want to remain in their communities and stay mobile, they want to be able to get out and be able to get around in their neighborhoods. So, we're recommending these design guidelines that we would use as staff, and the way we developed them is basically, we set up character zones for the neighborhoods and street typologies for the streets. And I'll explain what that means in a second. But basically, what we figured out is that, well, one side doesn't just fit all, we just can't jam a bicycle lane every place, we just can't approach transit the same on every street. So we began by looking at the different character zones of the city, and what we found was that there was about seven different character zones. For example, Salem Avenue is a good example, if you start Salem Avenue and you head west, the first block or two west of Burhans Boulevard is a very traditional neighborhood, the houses are very close to the street, the street is very narrow, but then, as you get out so far, maybe like to West Side or so, it opens up in the street, the houses are set back more, the lots are a little bit bigger, and it changes into a different character. So the closer to Burhans zone is called the residential traditional, the one that's further out is called the residential suburban. So we looked at the zoning and the actual land use all over the city, and kind of mapped it out as to all these different uses. Then, we kind of defined what each of those uses look like, and we have examples on the, up here, the residential suburban, for example, the houses are set back from the sidewalk, they're a little bit larger lots, and there's a picture on the right that depicts what that would look like from the air. Downtown, of course, looks a lot different than residential suburban. Just a couple of different examples of that, commercial center like Garland Grove Boulevard, industrial campus area like around our major schools in the city, and we set up those character zones. Then we looked at the different types of streets, because different streets function in different ways. And I think it's important to note that this doesn't apply to 80% of the streets in town. This does not apply to the Sunset Streets, Sunset Avenues, it doesn't apply to the Wakefields, it doesn't apply to Park Lane or Chestnut. Those are residential, local streets that we're never going to put a bike lane on, we're never going to have a bus stop on, it doesn't apply to those. It applies to the streets that have heavier volumes, and are streets that are more of a collector or arterial nature, and they're mapped on this particular drawing called street typology. So all that means is, what, how does that street function? So we assign those different type of things. So we had such a thing as a ring road, where would be something like Eastern Boulevard, or a spoke, which is maybe like Pennsylvania Avenue, or Potomac Avenue, or something like that. So we assign these types to the different types of streets. And then, once we know the character zone, and we know the type of streets going through them, then we can make determinations on how we want to accommodate, of course, vehicles, but also bicycles, pedestrians, and transit. So we came up with these charts, and we have several of these charts that we would use, and the character zones are at the, self-confused, yeah, the character zone is mapped on here with the type of street. So, for example, a street such as a residential connector in the middle, an example of that is Potomac Avenue, or Salem Avenue out at the outer edge. The top line shows that we'll always provide a minimum of 10-foot lanes for travel, and wherever we can, we'll put full-time parking on the street. For bicycle provisions, we'll try to put a five-foot bike lane for those where we can. If we can't, then we'll just mark the outer lane with a shared use symbol and a sign for that. Pedestrians, we would always try to provide ADA-compliant sidewalks. We have sidewalks throughout most of the city, but our ADA compliance throughout the city still has a lot of work to be done. When you think about not only just the intersections where we put handicap ramps, but driveway entrances, utility poles, those kind of things, we'd have to look at those as we, say we pave a street, we would walk up and down the sidewalks and try to determine what areas need to be addressed. And then transit, things what we would do for transit would be, in the future, I could see us maybe having fixed bus stops, I could see us having a place maybe for a bus to pull over at a bus stop, if it's a busy road and they want to get out of traffic, and just continuing to have a better dialogue with the county commuter operations to try to have more efficient and effective service in the city. So then, we just have a couple sketches up here of what we're talking about, of before and after. So this one is Potomac Avenue, where at the top it shows the two drive lanes, and that's basically what's there now. In the future, when we would pave that street, we would show two drive lanes, two bike lanes, and then also parking, and all that would fit out there. Another example is Manor Drive, this is off the dual highway, we just paved this a few years ago, but it's a good example. There's nothing we could do to that street, even though there is a lot of pedestrians and bicycles in that area, especially pedestrians. So what we had to do was just, obviously, make the sidewalk as accessible as possible, but also, we added the shared use lanes for the bicycle combination. North Potomac Street, kind of a similar situation, whenever we pave the 100, 200, 300 blocks of North Potomac Street, there's not a lot we're going to be able to do, other than provide shared use for the bicycles, and inspect the sidewalks, and, again, look at transit, because that would be an important element on that street. South Potomac Street would be similar. West Antietam would be similar. So in a lot of places, we can't do a tremendous amount of changes to what's already out there, but where we can, we're going to consider what the accommodations are needed for pedestrians, bikes, and transit.
There on West Antietam, I don't see...
Oops, sorry.
I don't see parking.
Yeah, it's too narrow for even parking.
You can hear, that's right.
Church Street's the same way. Church Street, we could have parking on one side, right now, it's, some parts of it are just two lanes. Northern Avenue is one we've talked about a lot, it's four 10-foot lanes, where with a complete streets policy, I think we'd want to bring this one back to council, but we'd have one lane in each direction, a bike lane in each direction, and then a center turn So if you're okay with this policy, what we would do is adopt it, and then we would start to implement as we pave streets, and work at improving the streets over time, and then document the changes that were made. That's it, in a nutshell.
Thanks, this is definitely the result of a lot of work and effort put in by staff and the planning commission, the board of traffic and parking, the bicycle advisory committee. I think it's a great policy to have, I think, like you said, it's more, it's a better thing when you are building a lot of new streets, it's easier to make this happen, but certainly, even if we adopted the resolution to that effect, and were able to do whatever we can with the existing streets, I think that would make life better for everybody.
Example of that would be Professional Boulevard, when that road is extended across Antietam Creek, with this policy, we would basically be saying, "We have to accommodate pedestrians, and we have to accommodate bicycles," and that's going to happen. And I think a lot of this is what we're already doing, it's just kind of puts it into an official policy.
I like the fact that this report relies on the pedestrian and bicycle data, you know, actual incidents where there have been, crashes is the term that it uses, between pedestrians or bicycles and vehicles. And I like the fact that you point out that 80% of the streets are never going to see these, because I think that was critical for me to read, because I'm like, "Man, how are you ever going to do this?" But I think that the two things are missing in this is some more focus on lighting, because lighting, I just think, plays a huge role in these streets and the pedestrian safety factor.
Is that part of the policy at all, the lighting aspect?
It's not mentioned, but, I mean, that's part of the pedestrian, I mean, we could add that to the pedestrian section of this, because I see your point...
I see a slide there, but, well, in all these pictures, what's interesting is that there is lighting, you know, different kinds of lighting in all those pictures.
What we don't have in there is like lighting criteria, like some may put handles is what's required.
Right. And the other is, on a couple of the streets you identified, that I would consider more urban, I think that there is opportunity to get, well, number one, on the wider streets, I don't like medians, just my personal, but I think that there is the opportunity, in some of these streets that are, people try and use for two lanes, that we have parking on, that are a little wider than a parking and a single lane of travel, is to try and bump that curb out to get your two feet of grass strip, I think that's key in these more dense streets. But I think that the additional, more crucial issue is the sidewalk of some of these areas, and the way that the stoops and the plantings are offset among one another, because when you're walking and you're trying to meet ADA, you know, I could walk up Washington, down Franklin, and you can see obvious points where there isn't that clear five feet that you're looking for, because of how we've stationed plantings and how we've, you know, as it relates to stoops and things like that.
That's just, all those things that occupy that sidewalk space, it doesn't always give you a platform clear area. Yeah.
Anyone else have thoughts on whether we implement the policy, move forward on this?
I'll just say, I know Dawn isn't here tonight, so we haven't had the opportunity to hear it, so I'll say it for him, this was a heck of a job done by staff.
Thank you.
And it really was, and I'd be the first one to say, "Yes, let's implement it."
Marty, how about you?
Now, I worked through this with the planning commission, it's like so many things we do in an older city, it's a matter of judgment, and a matter of, you can't just blank and apply these criteria. And we have, right now, we have relatively limited amount of new development, so, you know, I think it's still going to mean coming back on a lot of individual projects and say, "Here's how we apply these guidelines."
Yeah, for sure.
Because it's going to be compromises in every respect, so what I don't think we'll want is a surprise, like, "Oh, it's in the guidelines, you should have known we were going to do this way," and have eliminated like a whole stretch of parking or something, which we may agree with.
The Northern Avenue is an example.
Which we may agree with, the Northern Avenue is a good example, I mean, I don't think that's a bad concept, but, you know, we need to think about it. But I say, you know, adopting the guidelines, I mean, you can go back and say, "This is what, how close we can come," you know, without running up against one problem or another. So, so that's all, I think common sense, like so often we have to say, is where you go with these ideals.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and, yeah, Northern Avenue is a perfect example, we wouldn't do that without coming back and showing you what we're going to do.
Yeah.
Because that's a fairly significant change.
But any change, you know, from arrangements, we ought to at least be aware of it, if that's coming up.
Okay. There's not any feedback?
Not at all.
Okay. Thank you very much. So you'll be back with a resolution and some other action items?
We'll have a policy update next week.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, that brings us to city administrator comments.
I have just one, which is, earlier today, we recognized a lot of city employees, and in that recognition, there was obviously a lot of years of service, a lot of good years of service by a lot of good people that have done very good work for the city. So, wanted to acknowledge that, and also say, we appreciate all of you being there today for the recognition, that was much appreciated. That's it for me.
Excellent. Council comments, Mr. Brubaker.
No comments tonight.
Mr. Alshar.
Couple of things, one is sincerely congratulations to Commissioner Wyble for his nomination and acceptance as a delegate. I think that, again, serving with him for four years at the county level... the county level, he is, and I said this to some of the Republicans that contacted me on this issue, in my opinion, and serving with him, he's one of the most ethical people that I've ever met. And so, I think that that's something that we said about that in public service. The second is, in the absence of Councilmember Munson, I would say we did come downtown Saturday evening, and, you know, you're seeing, and I hate to pick on the rhubarb, but when you see the rhubarb houses open, you know, in the evening, you know, something is going on. And I know that the Councilmember Munson speaks about the Maryland Theater sort of being the defining entity that brings that activity downtown. And as, you know, we walked down the street, we're like, oh, okay. And so, I would only say that echo his often comment that, you know, we're making good investment in the Maryland Theater, because it certainly brings life and activity to the areas around it downtown.
And they had an excellent program over the weekend.
They sure did.
Interject.
Mm-hmm. The last is, and I talked to Lou and some of the other council members about this, and I just want to note the article on the Williamsport shooting and obviously the reference to the suspect, you know, being from the Hagerstown. And I realize that public defenders have a job to do representing these individuals. But this is the third instance of this particular public defender in this type of representation to make of similar remark to say, although the public defender acknowledged the charges against this individual were very serious, a shooting, obviously serious, when you're home invading somebody and shooting them so that they won't testify against you, I guess it is. The public defender acknowledged that the suspect lives in Hagerstown, and he was out in public on Burhans Boulevard where he was apprehended Friday. You know, that paints a picture like this individual is a completely safe individual to be in our community, and they're just hanging out waiting for their pizza at Little Caesar's, and the cops happened to see him. I think that that is belittling to the sheer volume of effort that went into that apprehension process. And so, kudos to our various police forces that participated in that, because that was an effort by those entities. It wasn't by happenstance, and so thankful that they're out there. And what hope that folks that feel that those types of individuals are simply okay to be let back out within our community, think twice on that notion.
Thanks, Ms. Nye.
Congratulations to Lou for being on the city council for 20 years. He was one that received an award today. The public now knows. Lou's getting old. Oh, my. Also, I received, also, I received a phone call today, and the person was really, really upset as they were going through the internet and said, did you see the article about? And I said, no, I wouldn't see it, but just tell me about it, okay? And I really shouldn't even bring it up, because then it'll just give them more tension. But it's the Crab Rapper, and obviously, it is, I guess, a newspaper. And what it had, the headlines, and where this person really became unglued, Western Maryland to be placed on the auction block. That would mean Allegheny, Garrett, and Washington County. No, that is not the case, but I want to tell you.
It's called satire, people.
All I can say is, is that they have nothing else to do. I'm sorry.
It's called satire.
But for all of the ones that, you know, just don't get it as far as satires, and those that think, oh, my, what if this could happen?
I know. I said, well, we're gonna give you some money.
It really is. It was, you know, it just is one of those things. Yeah. But anyway, not good. Also, the question was, and now everybody has left from code, when I brought the issue about the house up in my area, there was an email that did come out, and it stated that Councilman Munson said that he felt that things were being looked into and that as long as there was no one living in there. Well, when all of what was going on, as I had mentioned last week, yes, in fact, they were living there. The electric did not get put in their name until March the 5th, but the electric was still on, because there were workers that were working in there. And I just don't bring things into City Hall without me knowing what is going on. And as far as I'm concerned, it was not addressed properly. And it still has not yet, I don't believe, because I've not gotten an email to that, been looked at as far as an inspection. And on that same note, with empty lots, lots that have been purchased, where either a house has come down, but we do have sidewalks. I have one that was, it's up in the West End. Started clearing, didn't clear, had all the rubble over there, and sidewalks that did not even get touched. So, there again. And that's why I needed to know where it was that we stood with our inspectors, that we said, yeah, and they addressed it tonight, that there in fact was two more that was hired, and we only need another one yet. So, hopefully, in the future, all of what needs to be taken care of will be taken care of. And another issue is businesses bringing their trash into Hagerstown. And unfortunately, unless you have a camera on the business, you're not going to know it, because we have no one that is going to be working after 4:00, and that's when, for the most part, those that want to bring in, bring in, they put in front of. And then, of course, I'm the one that gets the phone calls, and there really isn't anything that I can do other than to direct it to code and say, okay, this is what is happening. So, we do have a dilemma. We really do. And even though it may be 100 numbers, it may not be 100 numbers, one bad apple can destroy the whole community. So, but anyway, I did want to say thanks to Jeanne in engineering, because I want to tell you, she has been the person that I've had to reach out to when it has come to trash, trash that's not being picked up by the trash people, and those that are not using the trash properly. And then she's able to contact the trash people to let them know, and they do pull up. And also to Eric's department. We have had more items being set out. Sofa that was down here on Hamilton Boulevard, coming right from Long Meadow Shopping Center, there it's set. Pangborn, a huge chair, over where it's all been torn down. Over on Locust and North Avenue, another sofa, mattress and a chair. And we can't say that it belongs to the people that live in there, because we have no proof. But yet, we're the ones that's putting the money out for it. And at some point, I don't know what can be done with that, but I hope something. I don't know. But I have to vent. That's how I vent. And what I bring, I bring because I know what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nye. Mr. Metzner.
Thank you, Mayor. I would concur with what our city administrator said about the luncheon, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for the kind words you had to say with regards to me. The other thing is, today, I can tell you, there is a whole lot of people in Baltimore Street that if they're not celebrating right now, they will be when they hear the news that that light that's been existing in that neighborhood for way too long, there is a light at the end of the tunnel, and we're going to go from light into something very positive. So, not only was that a positive thing, but these two items that we had tonight, Baltimore Street properties being one, and the library being another, is just another example of intergovernmental cooperation, which has been a very good thing, and we would sure like to see it continue during the course of these administrations. Thank you.
Thank you. My comments, I want to thank staff and especially the county's parks and recreation, speaking of great partnerships, the city and the county working with the Community Free Clinic to put on the St. Patty's Day run. Even a little rain could not keep away the hardcore runners, and I think they still had over 700 people pre-register, and hundreds of people showed up. I don't know the exact numbers of people who actually showed up, but it turned out to be a great day. People come from all around for those races and runs. So, that was a great event. I also attended the Dome of Black Heritage Museum's event on Saturday afternoon. It was a very good program, and I want to thank Aaron and Eric for contributing their time and talent to a really great video about African-American veterans from Hagerstown. It was a very well-put-together presentation. And I want to remind folks that this Thursday evening is the neighborhood's first event at the Academy Theater at 6:00 PM. And also, I want to thank all the employees who made milestones this year. I know Junior Mason, our park superintendent, has reached a 40-year milestone, which is just really unfathomable to me. I can't imagine doing 40 years of anything, because I'm not even 40 years old yet. But to think of the progress he's been a part of and has contributed to, Councilmember Metzner reaching a 20-year milestone, various other department heads I know reached milestones this year, and of course, our city administrator. And what I said really is true, that to be in Bruce's position, or even to be in Councilmember Metzner's position, to have lasted this long really is a testament to their dedication and hard work and connection to the community and survival instinct, I guess you could say. So, congratulations again, and as long as there's no other comments, we shall be adjourned. Thank you.